All right, good evening. I'd like to call to order the regular City Council meeting of Lakewood, Colorado on March 13th, 2023 at 7:15 PM. For those participating via telephone, the number is 720-707-2699, with a webinar ID which is the same as the Zoom app ID of 849-5732-0840. Press pound, pound to get into the meeting. And with that, the clerk, please call the roll.
Paul.
Here.
Oliver. Maya Guerrero.
Here.
Stuart.
Here.
Franks.
Here.
Strom.
Here.
Jansen.
Here.
Charzai.
Here.
Springsteen.
Here.
Vincent.
Here.
Abel.
Here.
Mayor Paul, you have a quorum.
Fantastic. Well, I'd like to welcome everybody to City Council this evening. Thank you for joining us, whether you're online.
I told him I would probably call him late.
Councilor Springsteen, you are unmuted. So I'd like to thank you all for making it out this evening, and certainly for those who are engaged online. A couple housekeeping notes. If you please turn your phone off or keep your meeting on mute, that'd be fantastic. And we'll now do the pledge allegiance. So if you'll rise and join me, and we'll have a moment of silent prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, will the clerk please read item five?
Item five, proclamation. March is colorectal cancer awareness, colorectal cancer awareness month, excuse me.
All right. Well, thank you. I have a Bree, a member of our community, reached out and asked if we would do this. And I appreciate you bringing this to our attention and this important issue. So proclamation, mark as colorectal cancer awareness month, whereas one in 23 men and one in 25 women in the United States will be diagnosed with colorectal cancer, amounting to an estimated 145,000 people being diagnosed this year. And whereas over 52,000 people died of colorectal cancer in 2020. And whereas one in 10 individuals diagnosed colorectal cancer under the age of 50 are 58% more likely than older patients to be diagnosed with late stage, with a late-stage disease, with incidence rates expected to increase by more than 140% by 2030. And whereas affordable take-home colorectal cancer screening options exist, and 60% of deaths could be prevented with timely screenings. However, one in three individuals are not up to date with their screenings. And whereas colorectal cancer incidence and mortality rates are disproportionately higher among minorities, with Black Americans having 20% greater chance of being diagnosed with colorectal cancer. Indigenous communities also have higher rates of colorectal cancer, more than their white counterparts. As with Eastern European Jews, and are one of the highest at-risk ethnic groups for colorectal cancer out of any other group in the world. And whereas there is currently no cure for colorectal cancer, and is the second-leading cause of cancer deaths in the United States among men and women combined. And whereas it is critical that people of all ages know the signs and symptoms of the disease, and whereas observing colorectal cancer awareness month provides a special opportunity to offer education on the importance of early detection and screening. Now therefore, on behalf of the City Council and people of the City of Lakewood, I, Adam Paul, Mayor of the City of Lakewood, Colorado, by virtue of the authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim March as colorectal cancer awareness month. So I want to hand this to you. I don't know if you want to say anything. You don't have to, but please.
I just want to say thank you on behalf of the Colorado Department of Health and the Colorado Colorectal Cancer Alliance. I myself am a stage-three rectal cancer survivor, diagnosed at 40, so it's very important that you look and get screened. And if you have any symptoms, go to your doctor right away.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
All right. I will just add a personal note. I turned 45 this year, and my doctor said I should go get tested. And I had my test this week, and it went very well, and it was easy. But it's important for people to know to take advantage of this, and especially with those statistics. So thank you. All right. Clerk, please read the next item.
Item six, presentation, Neighborhood Links Project from the Lakewood Advisory Commission.
All right, Ms. McBride. Hey, good evening. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Hi.
Hi.
We get set up here. Good evening, mayors, the councilors. Thank you for having me this evening. I'm Kate McBride. I'm the chair of the Lakewood Advisory Commission, or LAC. I'm here to speak I'm here to speak about the Neighborhood Links assignment completed by our Neighborhood Subcommittee. You'll see this referred to as Connect Lakewood at certain points in this presentation or in the report in your packet. This was an alternate name used during a public interaction component of the project, but more on that later. All right. So the assignment language is shown on this slide. So sidewalks, shared-use paths, and trails are key features of a thriving community. These terms appear throughout most of the plans already adopted by the city. These projects, as you know, are significant investments. So the goal of this assignment was to develop tools that the city can use to identify and select appropriate projects when funding opportunities arise. So the activities associated with this assignment were divided into four interconnected components, the categorization spreadsheet, GIS mapping, resident input, and equity mapping. So I'll share a little bit about each of these in more detail. So the assignment presented a unique opportunity for LAC to partner with representatives of city staff from Community Resources and Public Works, and they provided resources, guidance, input from start to finish. So the result of this project are tools developed under supervision of city staff, which can be maintained and utilized by the city. All right, so walking through kind of a summary of this project, the first component is the categorization spreadsheet, which houses all of our key information. So the first objective was to list all of the missing connections in a single location. So city staff provided us with the three foundational resources, those are listed on the slide here. The second objective was to resource each missing connection and provide the information outlined in the 2019 shared-use path and sidewalk selection factors, which is included in the report as Appendix A. So the points assigned in the categorization spreadsheet, that's columns J through V, and then totaled in the points total column, follow those 2019 selection factors. More on that later. So here on this slide, we see just a little snippet of the categorization spreadsheet. The complete file is included as a PDF in the agenda packet. So once we got our spreadsheet compiled, we took each location and put it into a GIS map. So this mapping process was only possible with the assistance from city staff, who probably never expected to teach willing novices to use GIS mapping. So the, some of the projects you'll see included multiple elements for the same location, things like a trail plus signage and grading. So when you're looking at that spreadsheet, you may notice some of the project numbers are interrupted, and that is why. So we only included one numbered element from the spreadsheet in the map. And I just wanted a personal note, the static image on this slide doesn't do it any justice. I'd encourage you to go interact with the map on the website. The link is embedded on page two of the report. It's a really cool resource. Then the resident input component of this project was, once the map was complete, there was a Lakewood Together conversation started. So that was opened for about seven weeks. So residents were able to use that interactive map to view the known missing connections, and then add any others they were aware of, or share an idea. So in total, we got 49 missing connections provided directly by residents. Once we closed that interaction, those connections were added to the spreadsheet and the map. So the final component was equity mapping. So we all know sidewalks, shared-use paths, trails are required by residents to access everyday necessities, things like work, school, medical care, grocery store. And these are especially important for residents with disabilities, children, older adults, people without access to vehicles. So the investment in this infrastructure can be a feature of the community and reduce disparities. So those 2019 shared-use path and sidewalk selection factors didn't include any equity criteria. So what LAC did was work with city staff to identify equity data that could be associated with each missing link. So what we decided to do was work with the Denver Regional Council of Governments, or Dr. Cog vulnerability data from 2019, because Dr. Cog data are updated regularly, and the categorization spreadsheet can be refreshed in the future. So Dr. Cog vulnerability index scores were added to the categorization spreadsheet for each missing connection. The score from the Dr. Cog index score was added as equal to the points. So it wasn't weighted, there was no calculation, it was just index score equals the points assigned. So that takes us to the points total. As discussed previously, points were assigned based on the 2019 selection factors. Dr. Cog score was the only variable introduced by LAC. Where two or more elements or conditions were found, those points were totaled, and then all the points were added in that final column. So what LAC found was the columns that contributed most to the overall scoring was neighborhood elements within approximately 1,500 feet via a pedestrian route and site conditions. Taking that Dr. Cog score as an independent variable, there was no direct correlation found between the total score ranking of projects. While those top-ranked projects do reflect a high total score and a high Dr. Cog score, as you go down that list of the total projects, that correlation disappears. So looking at the LAC recommendations, number one is when funding opportunities for projects become available, consult the spreadsheet tool. Number two is while the Dr. Cog score was a useful variable, it didn't seem to impact scoring ultimately. So consider assigning a higher point value, maybe a weighting or calculation in the future. And then three, periodically update the spreadsheet. So consider keeping something like the public interaction map as a permanent tool on the website for residents to provide input on missing connections in the future, and find additional means for residents to voice their need for missing connections. And then finally, consider a subsequent project to examine historical infrastructure spending, and if historical inequities are found, through that project, find ways to address those. Then lastly, just thank you to the fantastic city staff who helped us throughout this project, all the guidance, all the meetings, all the input they provided. We learned so much, and they were really fantastic. And always thank you to the City Clerk's Office for everything they do to help the LAC along, and for all the Neighborhood Subcommittee members, past and present, who contributed to this project. And happy to address any questions for the LAC, and I believe the city staff members who contributed are on the line, too, if there are Community Resources or Public Works questions.
Fantastic. Nice job, Ms. McBride. And just so everybody knows, she is the Chair of our Lakewood Advisory Commission. And who are your members that are here today with us? Raise your hand. Do we have any? There we go. All right, well, thank you. Maybe there's some more online. Appreciate your work on this. It looks like there are going to be a couple of questions, questions. Counselor Franks.
Actually, no questions, but I want to thank you for your leadership. Your enthusiasm is infectious. I just wanted to note that. And really, to all of LAC, there's a lot of hard work going on. We appreciate that. We often have openings, so if anybody is interested in joining this very enthusiastic leader, we would encourage you to look at our website and see if there's a position open. Thank you.
Counselor Vincent.
Yes, I didn't have a question either. But what I wanted to say was probably piggybacking a little bit on that, and that is, that's exactly what I, as a council member, hope that LAC can provide to us. This is great information. I plan on sharing it with some neighborhood groups that will validate, I think, what they believed was occurring. And the idea that we can use this when we look at future projects is great. So I appreciate the LAC. This is a wonderful thing for us to continue using, which is what we were hoping for. So thank you.
Counselor Abel.
Thank you, Mayor. I have to agree. This is monumental amount of information. I took a deep dive into it, and I kept saying, oh, yeah, that's right. I missed that spot. I think it's very complete. It must have taken a lot of work, and I'd have been chewing my nails before this was done. But thank you very much, and I hope we can use it to advantage in future planning. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Maya Guerrero, and then Counselor Charzai.
And definitely reflect these excellent sentiments. This is incredible work, and I think will be helpful for a lot of things, both in terms of, you know, how we consider making complete streets happen over years, but also, I think, for us as community advocates, how we're able to get really specific about, like, areas that we know we represent that are particularly, you know, impacted by this. I also just wanted to put on the record in this conversation that I think this idea about a historical funding and equity study is something that could potentially be used to enhance this, make this even more useful as a tool, is something I feel really, really interested in, and that I also am very excited to see how this impacts our next comprehensive plan, which I know is another thing on everybody's mind.
Counselor Charzai.
Yes, thank you. Echo the appreciation for all the work that went into this. I think that there, I wonder if there was any conversations towards the end, but we have a lot of neighbors here from the Applewood Valley, but I know that this is consideration across the city around Seafrouths to schools. And so I think this will be an important tool as we start to explore what those options are. But I wonder if that came up at all in your research over the last, like, towards the end of that process?
So one of the factors in the scoring was proximity to schools. So that came up when we were looking at individual locations, and that is included in the 2019 selection factors. There wasn't extensive discussion beyond that, but certainly something that could be further explored in the spreadsheet. It is captured in there for each location. So certainly something that, as you're sorting, reviewing each location and re-sorting the spreadsheet, it is a variable in there that can be, can be looked at.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Very cool. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, I hope you have a wonderful evening. Okay, so next up, I'm going to do two quick things. So I'm going to read our statement of conflict. All members of the City Council have the responsibility to comply with the terms of Charter 7.2B and excuse themselves from voting on any matter in which they determine they have a personal, financial, or business interest. The City Council is empowered by Charter 7.2B to agree by unanimous vote, excluding the member at issue, to excuse any member of the council from voting on a matter in which they determine they have such a personal, financial, or business interest. And what I would like to do is, so we have an interesting situation that, in fact, in my tenure, I think we've only had that, this happened twice, where we have extended a second hearing after public comment has been closed. However, we have had a lot of interest in one subject tonight, and that's ordinance number nine. And we also have a lot of folks that have weighed in, whether via online or want to speak in chambers. So certainly, we will let that happen. What I would like to do is just, we have kind of a mundane resolution, which is item 2023-14. I'd like to have item eight read into the record. We can take care of that. We'll move into public comment, and then we can go into our discussion on item nine, which is the ordinance. So with that, will the clerk please read item eight into the record?
The consent agenda includes item eight, Resolution 2023-14, approving an amendment to an intergovernmental agreement with Colorado Department of Transportation for improvements along Wadsworth Boulevard near Morrison Road, and authorizing the city manager to execute said agreement.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing on Resolution 2023-14. Nobody has indicated a desire to speak on that. There is a presentation on Lakewood Speaks. I do have a hand up from online, K1. Do you wish to speak on this resolution? K1? Going once. Okay. All right, we're going to go ahead and close public comment. I'll ask for a motion on Resolution 2023-14.
Mayor Paul, I move for the adoption of Resolution 2023-14, included in the consent agenda introduced into the record by the city clerk. Second.
Okay, motion is second. Any discussion? Please catch your votes. Counselor Springsteen? Okay, and that passes 9I, 1N, the N being Counselor Springsteen. Great, thank you. So next up, this is the point in the meeting where the public is invited to address City Council on items that did not appear on the agenda. All comments should be directed to the City Council. I ask that all in attendance and those calling in observe the decorum of City Council chambers, and refrain from applause or audible support or discord with the speaker. There is a three-minute limit time per speaker. We don't have a light tonight. We used to have one down here. But you will see, on the back screen, you'll see your time will go down, and then we'll also have that for the folks calling in online. For the folks online, when you're down to 30 seconds, you'll hear a ding, and when your time is up, you'll hear another ding as well. I'd also like to remind folks, as we received a lot of comments, not only online, but certainly people that wish to speak, I'd encourage you to, you know, try not to be redundant, try to focus on exactly what you want to talk about, and hopefully, we can get through this in an efficient and effective manner, as we have a lot of input that folks want to engage in. And then one last piece before I go into public comment, counselors Charzai and Franks have asked to address counsel in the community.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council. So first, I want to just recognize and thank we had tremendous response from the community on this topic. I appreciate the people who reached out via email, through calls, and through Lakewood Speaks. It's important to hear community's voice in this. And so I wanted to just share a couple of things. You know, there is some, my point in the amendment that I made earlier last month was really because I was hoping to guard against unregulated short-term rentals. But it is clear from the community input that there is still more conversations that need to be happening on this topic. And so what I'd like to offer is, just when I was elected to office, it was a privilege and an honor to represent the community. And even if I don't agree with you, I want everyone to feel like their voice is heard in this process. And so what I'd like to offer, if my colleagues will consider this tonight, is for us to go back to the primary residence consideration with an understanding that we need a look back for additional conversations around regulations. But I do feel like this is more amenable to what the community is asking for, and that this gets us better aligned with all of the years of community input that has been on this topic. I want to recognize my co-counselors on this, who have been working on this for many years, and this is in the spirit of working together collaboratively to find a solution for this in our community. So thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Franks.
Thanks, Mayor Paul. Appreciate that. I will not be as eloquent and able to do that off the cuff, so I did prepare written remarks because I am tired. And so I just wanted to read this, so I apologize if I'm looking down a lot. So first, I wanted to thank everyone for their time and efforts over the past several years to get us to this point, and for your grace as we move forward tonight. I want to thank everyone for all of the comments across three-plus years, the comments online, the emails that I've received, the calls I've received, and the conversations. They have been many over the past months. They have been many over the past month and every one of them is appreciated. Read every single email, read every single comment, and really appreciate everyone's perspective. For me, regulating short-term rentals is about enacting and appropriate mechanisms for keeping competing priorities and interests balanced. It is also about ensuring through a robust process, a thorough understanding of the community values and desires, crafting effective and enforceable rules that align with those values and desires, conducting impact and risk analysis, mitigating risks through amendments in order to set expectations with stakeholders and ensure complaints can be effectively managed. I am very thankful to Counselor Sherezai for giving me ample opportunity to express all of my concerns and for her and I to come together on a path forward. Regardless of the individual votes tonight, I know some will walk away with tonight's meeting believing counsel acting as a body did strike the right balance. Some will believe we didn't do enough and others will believe we did too much. This is why we must continue the conversation and as such, I fully support a look-back in one year. While I won't be on counsel in one year, as someone who has been deeply involved in this topic over many years and has a lot of historical knowledge, I offer to this counsel and to the future counsel and to the community to be a resource between now and that look-back period if counsel comes to consensus that that is the direction they would like to move. I would also like to offer a very special thanks to the city attorney's office, who worked tirelessly to work through my litany of questions and concerns, of which there were many, and all my requests for research that were answered in a timely and thorough manner. So, thank you very much. That was really information I needed in order to have effective conversations. And I would be remiss if I did not give my hat off to Counselor Vincent for her service on the Housing Policy Commission, for her willingness to take over as chair when I needed to step away from that position, and for all the time she has spent over the last month helping me through my processes and working through all of the things that I wanted to address and the concerns I had. So, thank you very much and thanks to all of you.
Thank you both. So, we'll go to public comment. Counselor Abel, your hand is up.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm a bit confused about the process here. We don't usually approach things in this manner. We usually read the proposal, proposed legislation into the record and I am certainly willing to wait until we do such, but I want to make sure that I have an action plan I would like to propose. I want to make sure I can propose that. If not now, then after this is open. So, what would be the proper time for that?
No, certainly, I think, just due to the process that we have, right? Normally, we wouldn't even take general public comment on an agenda item, which we have, but because we closed public comment on the second round, there was a lot of interest related to what Counselors Sherezai and Franks spoke about. So, to let the community know that, one, that's that piece. Certainly, they're welcome to speak. We will open, reopen that item up and have whatever conversation counsel wants to have as well as a vote.
Tonight.
Tonight, yep.
Thank you.
You betcha. Okay. Again, so, we're gonna start public comment and this will be for both items eight, nine, essentially, general public comment. You see the timer there. If you are online and wish to speak, you can also raise your hand by pressing star nine and we'll start to go through folks that are here and signed up. First up, Mr. Mase, come on down. And then, also, if you are signed up and you agree with the speaker and want to just say, "I agree," we can keep moving. And then, it looks like Ms. Kris, K-R-I-K-R-E-I-S, will be next and then Joan Poston. And we'll wait for you to, for the clerk to get ready and then we'll start when you're ready. Welcome.
Give me three seconds, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. James Mase, Ward One. I've been watching YouTube, 'cause I haven't been in the world for quite a while. I've been following you guys on YouTube. But, Mayor, I am very upset with you, highly upset with you. You have treated this council like garbage. You have treated every citizen that comes up here like garbage. I am tired of watching it. This council needs to have a major attitude adjustment because I am dead, sick, and tired of watching it. Thank God, Mayor, you'll be out of here in November because I can't, I can't deal with you guys anymore and I dealt with this too many times. I've been up here to deal with this way too many times. So, if you guys, Mayor, you work for us, every single one of you work for the citizens of Lakewood. We don't work for you, so do us all a favor. Do your jobs or get out of here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mase. Okay, so, let's get our clap out. If you wanna, if you wanna do this, you're welcome to, but we're gonna refrain from audible applause and discord with the speaker, so, thank you. All right. Next up, we have Ms. Kris. Is that, welcome. And then, Ms. Poston and then, Ms. Moya. Is that our clock?
Hi, my name is Tammy Kreis.
Kreis, sorry.
I live at 1548 Ingle Street in Lakewood. I'm not sure what ward that is. I believe it's Ward Two. And you'll see some video here that is from an issue, local issue in my neighborhood. Beware, the video can be loud. There are two short videos.
house. I'm about halfway up the block from Colfax on the north side. This one's even louder.
Mr. Mayor and the Council, this bar, since it opened late last year, has continually done this type of thing every night they've been open. I don't get home from work until after midnight and this is still going on then. Something needs to be done. They've had fights there, they've had arguments there, the music is always loud. This is at least 50 yards from my house. I've lived there for over 10 years. My husband is here with me. This is ridiculous. We have never had issues like this before this bar opened and I would like to see something done, either them made to follow the ordinances or to have them shut down. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And we'll certainly look into that. Normally, I swing back after public comment, but it could be a while, so. Okay, Ms. Poston, Ms. Moya, and Ms. Rhett.
Good evening, Council. Thank you for giving me this time. I have just given you an update on the FOIA that I've been working on. Next Tuesday, March 21st, will be exactly six months since I started trying to get some of this information on the land that is there at Fourth and Union. We're having some interesting negotiations and last week, somebody called me and told me that they were actually surveying this land. I'm not sure why the land is being surveyed and I'm not sure who's in charge of it now and I'm not sure whether it was titled by the original people that bid on it in August. But, I gave this to you. I want you to know that I have reached out to the National Archives and I am in the process of reaching out to people in Congress. So, that being said, I have something else to address. There is a bill called HB 231190 that is coming up in front of the Senate Committee of Local Government and Housing. And this is why I'm bringing it to you, because it is something that is local. This bill is entitled Affordable Housing: Right of First Refusal. I first found out about first refusals when I dealt with the land at Fourth and Union with Coalition for the Homeless. And sometimes, there's written into law that the people who have the right to purchase are first in line, the cut-in line. Now, this proposal that they're having is going to allow people who are doing affordable housing to make the first bid on multiple buildings and I find this repugnant and also a violation of public property. And I bring it to you just to let you be aware that we're out there and we're aware of this. The other thing I'd like to say is, today, 1202 passed, the House is going to go to the Senate. Pretty sure it will be passed in the Senate as well. This is your oversight for doing drugs, your safe sites. And it is going to allow you to locally vote on having a safe injection site. I strongly, strongly encourage you to reach out to the legislature and voice your opinion on this legislation. So, thank you very much. If you have any questions about what's going on at Fourth and Union, I am available and I have become somewhat of a touch point in the community. People are asking me to do things for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Moya? Ms. Rhett? If you want to start coming down and Mr. Newell.
Are you calling me?
Yep. If you want to start heading down, you can, but I have Dolores in front of you. Dolores, did you wish to speak? Come on down.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I want to first say thank you to Sharon Vincent. You know, she's counsel in my ward and whenever I have a caller of concern, thank you, Sharon, because you will call me back and we do have an interesting talk at times of what my concerns are. I have only have had, and to my disappointment, a call never received but one time from Sophia Goretto and I voted for her. And I voted for her because I thought I would have trust in her for her to bring my concerns here to all of you. I also want to make a comment regarding the gentleman in the wheelchair that spoke and he carries my thoughts as well, that you all do work for us. And don't forget it, please. So, that being said, I guess I have a concern because I wasn't sure about this resolution of the short-term rentals. And my question to you, Mr. Mayor, is, are the constituents allowed to vote on this or is this going into a secret chamber that you all vote on late at night when the constituents are here? Or do you all wait for all of us to go home and then you make your decision to go and pass with this short-term rental? So, when does that, when did that get passed? Was that passed to have a short-term rental?
That's our hearing tonight.
Yes, I, I'm aware of that, but my concern is, because I had heard, maybe I just didn't hear it correctly from other people, that you all made this choice to make it. No? Okay. All right. So, that being said, I will step back, but again, thank you, Ms. Vincent, for your time that you give me. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Ms. Rhett, you're up next. Mr. Newell, then Mr. Harrell.
I'd like to speak too.
Okay.
Thank you. Davis, we're talking.
Yeah, we have a, we have a list. We'll make sure we get you put on. Welcome.
I don't know if I can see those numbers. Can you make them bigger? No? Okay. Yeah. There we go. Good evening, Mayor Paul and honorable council members. I wanna, I'm gonna read an adaptation of a statement that I, from a letter that I sent you folks earlier. I want to repeat some of these points and add some things based on some things that have come up and also add some support for some of the things that I've heard. I want, I want to also start by mentioning that I appreciate the work all of you do for the city and the hours that you spend serving us. Unfortunately, I was surprised and frankly embarrassed by the behavior of Mr. Richard Overe recently and the lack of official response to his clear violation of decorum and protocol. I'm not gonna detail anymore, not gonna go back over what Overe did or what he said or what's been said before about that. Certainly not going to go back and rehash the lessons on history language and accepted decorum that have already been presented to the council by more qualified parties than I and read into the record. I will, I will add, however, that Mr. Overe has not only not demonstrated any acknowledgement whatsoever for his behavior, but I have heard and have seen evidence of his ongoing harassment and attempted intimidation of his very own constituents in Ward Four. I do want to mention how grateful and impressed I am with the comments on this so far. I can certainly assure Mr. Overe that none of my neighbors had to be told by anyone to be offended by his behavior. There is certainly not a conspiracy. I assure him of that. I am speaking today, therefore, to make the following requests. I'd like to hear a public statement from the mayor and the other members of the City Council making clear that Mr. Overe's language and treatment of his colleagues and the citizens of Lakewood is unacceptable. I'd like for Mr. Overe to make a public apology to his colleagues and to the people of Lakewood for his behavior. I'd like to see that a way be found to censure Mr. Overe and other bad actors on this council by the City Council at large. I do note that there is a, such a process is on the agenda for later this evening. I believe that the council will find wide support for such an item, should it be at it. Finally, in light of the well-recorded lack of decorum and in general, poor judgment as public admission in his Looking at Lakewood column where he admits transparently he is unhappy in this position, I call Mr. Overe to resign his position and remove himself from office. Once again, I thank you all for your service. Once again, I thank you all for your service and for your time and attention to my comments on this matter.
Great. Thank you. Ms. Rett, come on down. Good evening. Mr. Harrell, Mr. Zawetowski.
And today I want to say, you stand in front of the flag and you say "justice for all", but a woman of color, I don't have any justice. I'm an indigenous woman, a Latino woman, and also African. Is this on?
Yeah.
And for some reason, I'm not given the same justice like everybody else. First of all, it's, you think, you are beyond dealing with the law. The law is, I have asked for reasonable accommodation since October of 2018 until now, and I have 15 letters. Bernie is going to give you the other letters, but I gave you the last letter of my doctor's. I don't know why you think that you know more than my doctor, but your bill of health has passed, but my health has went down because you have not listened to my needs and had the nerve in front of Rebecca to say you, I didn't need these accommodations, that my apartment was well. Well, let me put you in an apartment where a lady's intestines has burst, and it's been all over the room, and I'm allergic to all that. Not only that, the apartment was dirty. It wasn't accessible. They put me in an accessible apartment, which the island was in front of the bathroom door. So, you tell me, oh, go to Chappa. Well, I went to you, and you're beyond the law? The law states, if I need reasonable accommodation, I should be coming before everybody else. Not everybody in the building moving three or four times, and I'm still in the same apartment, dealing with hazardous to my health, which you don't care, because your health passed. You could bring up cancer people, but what about me? A woman of color, oh, I'm indigenous. I shouldn't even have to be at the end and be stepped upon. We opened our arms and welcomed yous all here, but yet, what? I'm just a piece of dirt, and I'm not to get the same thing that everybody else has? And I'm a very spiritual person. I'm a holy person. And the thing is, is to bring this out, I could have sued a long time ago, but that's not what I'm about. I'm about working with everybody. And it's about time you take in my problems and get, deal with it. You haven't met with me, you and Ms. Fisher think yous are beyond the law. And you take managers, they think they could use the power to intimidate, intimidate people? Yes, I'm very, I'm very upset, because I want you to deal with this. You're not beyond the laws. Nobody is. And I have the rights to a reasonable accommodation now. I'm asking for apartment 109, because at least I could turn in the bathroom. I have to back up and go into the bathroom. The walls are hitting me on both sides. I can't go into the doorways or anything, but you think it's okay for me to live like this? And you stated it in front of Rebecca. This needs to stop, and it needs to stop now. I have rights just like everybody else.
Thank you. Mr. Harrell, and then Mr. Zawetowski, and then Ms. Guy. Good evening.
Mr. Mayor, Council. Just briefly want to discuss the structure that crosses the Ravine's Open Space over by Devini School. I see that as of today, the website was updated, saying that you were working with Green Mountain Water on trying to get this taken care of. I just want to voice my support for the city, and glad to see you're moving forward with that, and hopefully a resolution comes up soon. Appreciate it.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Zawetowski, Ms. Guy, and then maybe Mr. Joss.
I'm here again to continue to encourage finding a resolution with Green Mountain Water.
Just one second, let's get your timer started. Go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, no worries, I'll start over. Hi, I'm here again to continue to encourage finding a resolution with Green Mountain Water for continued pedestrian use for all three bridges at Ravine's Open Space Park. We understand that there are currently discussions between the two entities, but are unaware of the latest stance from either side. We found out today that Green Mountain Water has applied for fencing permits to barricade all three bridges. I do not know the status of these permits. I strongly recommend that Lakewood deny these permits, and believe that Lakewood has just reason to do so for the following reasons. First, the ownership of the bridges is not clear. Please require Green Mountain Water to prove ownership before a permit is granted. Second, it is a disservice to the community to no longer allow pedestrian access to any of these bridges. I stress that this is particularly emphasized on the upper and lower bridges that are 100% structurally sound. There are absolutely, absolutely no reasons that these should be closed, let alone barricaded. Finally, by Lakewood allowing these permits, and thus allowing the bridges to be barricaded, Lakewood is taking on new and even greater liabilities than they have now. People will find alternate, alternative routes that will be inherently less safe. This issue is important to our community. It is important to our community's children and their safety. I am here between my career, my family, utilizing what little free time I have to advocate for the right thing to do. I respectfully ask that you please continue to do all that you can to make our efforts worthwhile. As a side note, I am curious how the LAC's discussion tonight by Ms. McBride may apply to this scenario and safe routes to school. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Guy? Or Mr. Joss?
This is our son, Jared Guy, and he's missing. I will take every minute of every opportunity I get to get the word out. On February 26th, at approximately 7:00 PM, he walked away from Rome's Saloon at West Mississippi Avenue and South Huron Street. Jared was intoxicated, he was extremely depressed, and was not in a good state of mind. When he went missing, he was approximately three and a half miles east of Ward 3. Jared is 43 years old. He has spent his entire life in Jefferson County, in Lakewood, Morrison, Littleton, and Conifer. He has an 18-year-old son who is devastated, and he lives in Wheat Ridge. Jared would not go a day, not one day, without contacting his son. They are very close. I believe he would have headed west to get back to what he knows. Today is day 15. Fifteen days that you've been gone, not a sight, not a sound, nowhere to be found. Will I ever see you again? This, my worst fear. Every car that passes, every ping of the phone, sending chills down my spine and icicles to the bone. Please, pass the word. Thank you.
Mr. Joss? Ms. Hurskowitz? And then, Ms. Harabar? Forgive me if that's wrong. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Paul, Council. Thank you for your time. I'm just here to express my concerns over the STR resolution that I understand you're going to be voting on tonight. I recently discovered that there was going to be this sort of legislation passed, and wanted to express my concerns over it. This, I'm speaking as somebody who has direct experience with short-term rentals from another property that my wife and I own, that went from not having short-term rentals to having short-term rentals, and I can assure you, it was, it's a disaster. Partying, loud music, littering, urinating off balconies, if you can believe that, all kinds of just ridiculous behavior, as a result, direct result of these short-term rentals. People who use short-term rentals are there in vacation mode. They're there to party and have fun, not, they don't act like a neighbor would act. So, I'd strongly urge you to vote no on any kind of allowance to, or any legislation that will allow short-term rentals. There's been argument, I've had discussions with Mr. Oliver this past week, and he, his opinions on the matter are that, well, we can't dissuade, or stop people from making money on their properties. Well, this is a residential property, and let's not confuse the matter, STRs are a commercial enterprise. They don't belong in residential properties. And, and people have a right to make money off their property only so far as it affects my right to have a peaceful environment and a residential neighborhood. STRs don't, you've taken away your, your neighborhood, the fabric of the neighborhood. You don't have neighbors that you know. You've got transients effectively, different one every weekend coming in, having fun, partying and whatnot. I think STRs take away from what a neighborhood is supposed to be. I guess that's all I have to say on the matter, so I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Hurskowitz, Ms. Harabar, and then Mr. Brown.
Actually, right now, I'm not sure what you guys are voting on tonight, but I would like to suggest that the final decision be made by the voters in November. About a week ago, I sent a brief email to all of you on council, asking if you would support placing the STR issue on the November ballot. I only heard from three of you, and I would like to thank Counselor Jansen, Counselor Oliver, and Counselor Stewart for replying, especially to you, Counselor Jansen, for contacting me immediately, and then when you went needed clarification, you called me for clarification, and I sent a clarification out to the rest of you. I don't think, or maybe you just don't care how disrespectful it is to your constituents when you simply ignore them. You repeatedly minimize our voices. You voted for a contract for the city manager sight unseen, and so doing, you removed the provision that allowed the public, through community survey results, to have a voice in evaluating the city manager's performance. Now only you have that voice, which you used earlier this evening in the annual review held in executive session. Every time you significantly alter an ordinance on second reading and refuse to delay your vote for two weeks so that the public has time to review it, you minimize our voices. Tonight, you can demonstrate your respect for your constituents by letting them have the last word on short-term rentals through their vote in November. The only way to know how the entire city feels about this issue is to put it on the ballot. Please help us. Show us that you truly support public participation by allowing us to have the final word at the polls. Thank you.
Ms. Harabar? And Mr. Brown, and Ms. Geese.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilman. I guess I'm happy to say that I am not a native of Colorado. I am one of those people that are transient and came here, and I chose Lakewood as my home. I made Green Mountain my house since the location has so many great things to offer, parks, trails, great work opportunities, safe neighborhoods nestled right here in the foothills. I wouldn't have expected STR would be a consideration in this idyllic suburban location. What is a house to you? What is a neighborhood? What is a community? A house is where I feel safe. There's, where we're, day in and day out, you're there. A neighborhood, you know your neighbors, they care about you. A community where businesses and living thrive, where I can contribute and be an asset. I would like to voice my opposition to STR. Ward 4, particularly vulnerable. Skiing, Red Rocks, Band-Amier, Bronco Stadium, the School of Mines, all of these things are places where a weekender can come and take my place. I am concerned with the lack of correct enforcement of this illegal activities thus far, and that's the current increase in the staff that may not be in place in June of 2023 to take into effect these complaints, or policing, or whatever. This is not a solution for housing, but another hurdle in the process of this housing shortage. STRs is not capitalism. It is the slow dismantling of a cohesive environment that is the basis of kindness, volunteering, and investment. STRs can erode the suburban municipality of Lakewood and cause irreversible damage. Please reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brown, Ms. Geese, and Mr. Baker. Mr. Brown? Oh, there you are. Good evening.
We live in Ward 3. Thank you, Mayor and Councils, for your time and consideration. Thank you Housing Policy Commission for your time you spent on this. I'd like to see this ordinance pass. To qualify, we had mentioned to our neighbors that we were planning to open an Airbnb about six months after starting. We mentioned to them about it, and they said that they deemed that we had it going. All that time we booked, all the time that we were booked solid for 30 days a month, 15 to 18 bookings every month. In November 2018, we started renting with Airbnb until around March 2020. We had nothing but positive experience. I am in favor for STRs. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Geese, Mr. Baker, Mr. Sidebottom.
Short person here. Thank you for allowing me to come and speak. I always enjoy hearing what everybody else in the city is thinking as well. Against STRs, I hope that you do not vote this, just amongst the 10 of you, 11, however many are going to be voting from the city council and mayor. I think this should be brought to the people. This is something that's going to be affecting us more, much more greatly than it will be any one group right here. The thing that we do, that I have had experience with, though, is having had a place up in Columbine Lake, in Grand Lake, we did have short-term rentals. And luckily, they were able to put down some rules that were very, very well-watched over, and something that I thought was good to share. One of the things that they had, that was quite well thought out, and, and happened just after I purchased up there, was the fact that if you were going to have a short-term rental, you had to own the property at least three years. This kept some of the commercial people coming in and purchasing the beautiful cabins up there and starting a short-term rental right away, or purchasing five of them and starting short-term rentals right away. So, that was a good rule that I thought was, was passed through there. The long-term rentals, they could do for 30 days or longer, but, you know, six-month, one-year lease is wonderful to have. One of the things that, that we also had is that you had to have a permit. You had to have the permit with the county, and that's something that did bring in some dollars. I had my, my short-term rental permit. However, I just rented only to people that I knew, so I did not have difficulties with people that came around. The fact that if you had any violations, if you had any violations- The fact that if you had any violations, if you had any violations, that what, what are you going to do? The fact that they would call the police, maybe, if there's a problem, that shouldn't be the police that are going to be judging that. That should be the owner that is held responsible, and they should have one, maybe two, opportunities to get done and take that off the, off the market. One of the things that I thought was, was so great to have, though, too, is that you had to be within an hour of your property. If you were not within an hour of your property, then have it with a property manager so that somebody else could take that responsibility and not take it and put it on the police department. I think that we've got numerous people here that feel the same way, but at least if it does get passed, we've got to put some pretty stringent rules on this and make sure that they are held, held accountable. You cannot have people that are going to be in there 20 at a time if it's going to be a two-bedroom, two-bath. It should be two people per room, that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Baker, Mr. Sidebottom, Mr. Wall, Ms. Niket.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilors. My name's Robert Baker, Ward one. I'm speaking in opposition to the short-term rental proposal, or any proposal. Seems to me that you've been unable to come up with any solid way to approach this for over three years, and, by the way, during that time, you've allowed people knowingly to, to flout the law, which has been an effect that does not allow for short-term rentals over this entire time. People who want to get, you know, a economic benefit out of homeownership, they can do it on a long-term rental basis, 30 days or longer. If you want to turn residential neighborhoods into commercial enterprises with a transience and a constant problem going on, that's what you're going to create here. Enforcement's going to be another big problem. It's hard enough to enforce many of the ordinances that you have in the city right now, and if you start allowing short-term rentals, it's going to be a nightmare, and most of the enforcement will be after the fact. In other words, the damage is already done to the neighborhood. Maybe there'll be a penalty to some owner or something like that down the road, but at the moment, nothing's going to get done about it. So I would encourage either voting this down completely and just stick with the current ordinance that does not allow it at all, or put it to a vote in November. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sidebottom? Mr. Wall, Ms. Niket, and then Ms. Ortiz.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm kind of perplexed as well. You guys caught me off guard with your comments earlier in the evening, so I'm not quite sure where to go with this, except I guess we'll see what you vote on, but with, in respect of time and redundancy, is it possible to? I, I think our issues have been picked up and will be presented with, with, to avoid time-wasting redundancy, is, can we come back if my comments aren't picked up? No, that's it? I was going to read a letter that I decided not to read at this point out of respect for the comments that were made, and really, what we've been dealing with for a couple of weeks is the fury and the anger with what did happen in the February 13th meeting. A lot of folks felt like they just were spat upon and ignored and disrespected over what the amendments that were made and how quickly they passed. I, it's, again, I, it's clear that you guys are willing to look back at this. I guess we'll see where that goes, but really, my position personally all along has been no STRs, period. It's really okay to say no. We don't have to be like every other city. It, it's, I will admit, my daughter tried that a couple of years ago, pre-COVID, for about three or four months, and she shouldn't have done that, but everybody that she, well, 80%, she said, of all her tenants were folks staying over going to a Red Rocks concert, and it was a mess. And so she said, I don't want anything to do with this anymore, and didn't, but I've been pretty involved with this issue as well for a long time, and, and I, I guess we'll see where this goes. I think some of my fury and anger has been dismantled a little bit, having heard the comments and spoken with some of you and submitted my comments as well, so I appreciate that, and I appreciate your willingness to listen. My final comment, though, even though this is a bit out of text, is if, if nothing else, put this to a vote, it kind of gets a lot of people off the hook, really, and lets the majority speak and let them be heard. This affects a lot of people, and even one homeowner who suffers monetary damages because of something like this, or a bad apple, is one too many. We can't control the market. In a lot of ways, we can't control affordable housing, but this does nothing to help it. So it's okay to say no. I mean, this has kind of turned into a fiasco, and I, we just, a lot of us would like to see it end. So thank you, guys, for listening.
Sorry. Wall, then I have Ms. Niket, then Ms. Ortiz.
Good evening. I don't even know where to begin. Short-term rentals are not good for a neighborhood. I don't care who you are or what you think, it is not something you want in a residential area. It doesn't do any good for traffic, partying, as been brought up by numerous other people. I want to know, there's a saying, follow the money. What the heck is going on? You're not listening to your, to the, to the residents of Lakewood. It's obvious. Look, right here are a bunch of people that do not want it. It is obvious. So why are your interests outweighing ours? Do you want a short-term rental next door to you? Can you answer that? No. What about you, Mayor? Are you in a gated community where you don't have to worry about it? Okay. Anybody else? Do any of you want a short, a short-term rental next door? Huh, not a one of you. But you want, you want us to do that? That's ridiculous. You're not listening to the residents. I grew up here in Lakewood 70 years ago. I remember the Belmar mansion sitting on this property. This was a nice neighborhood. It has gone downhill. How do you expect the short-term rentals to be enforced? We have a police department that cannot even enforce traffic laws or crime. We got cars on the street with no registrations. Chances are, they don't have insurance also, but yet, we're worrying about short-term rentals going into a residential neighborhood? It, it's crazy. You are not listening to the residents of Lakewood. You're being self-centered and doing what you want to do, and I'd like to know how many of you are going to have a short-term rental, or you're going to own one and then start renting it off and making money off of it, off of our backs. Very, very disappointed in people that should be looking out after our best interests and not yours.
Thanks. Ms. Niket? Okay, so we're not going to have audible applause. We can do this if you wish. It's fine. Good evening. Welcome.
My name is Lori Niket, and I live in Ward one. My notes are kind of scrambled tonight, but I would like to just bring up several things to your attention. I live in a townhouse condo community, and even though our rules and regulations don't allow short-term rentals, some owners have rented their units out on short-term. It meant having new neighbors every month, parking issues and dog issues, and I felt like I lived in a hotel rather than in a condominium. How did renting out a spare bedroom for the night morph into owning at least two houses that are used primarily for short-term rentals, and one doesn't have to even be owner-occupied? It, it doesn't make sense. This issue should be decided by, should not be decided by 11 city councilors. They should be, it should be sent to a ballot so that everyone in the city can vote on it. I don't want a, a short-term rental next to me. If I owned a house, I wouldn't want a short-term rental next to me at all. Parking issues are going to be a big time, although I see that the parking plan was removed from the ordinance. I don't understand that at all, because parking in this, in this community is definitely serious. We've seen it with restaurants especially. There's one on West Alameda that the cars are parked two blocks each way from the restaurant, plus their parking lot is full almost every night. So parking is an issue. There was something saying that the abutting property owners would, would be able, would be notified, and so if, if they're notified, do they have an opportunity to actually have, oppose the, the application and have it not go into effect? Or is it just going to be pushed on them no matter what, and they have to take, take the short-term rentals no matter? I wouldn't want to live there. Again, this issue should be decided by the citizens of Lakewood, not by 11 people sitting on this, on this council right now. I, I really ask that it goes to a vote on a ballot issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bur, uh, sorry, Ms. Ortiz. Welcome. Then we have Ms. Burrows, Ms. McGee, then Ms. Johnson.
Hi, my name is Mary Ann Ortiz, and I live on Tabor Street. I'm also the president of the Applewood Valley Association, but I'm here tonight as a citizen. So, Jezlyn, you kind of stole my thunder by revoking the corporation part of what you're voting on tonight, and I thank you for that. Through this last year, as you became our new city council member, I feel like we're talking right to each other here. We've talked about short-term rentals, quality of life issues in the neighborhoods, keeping the neighborhoods intact. So I was just really surprised that all of a sudden, a corporation is thrown into the mix, not owner-occupied, and we want to protect our neighborhoods. I was also surprised at how quickly that that verbiage was thrown into the plan. We had a Ward one meeting. We've never had even a conversation about that, and that's our neighborhood. It's our homes. We need to be told about things that are changing in our neighborhoods, and let us have input. So I'm all discombobulated because you revoked that statement, but I just want to stress that we're fighting for our neighborhoods. We're already having issues. I've got to put my plug in. Quality of life issues by a Bruski's. Six years going now, and we're still having issues. So why do we want to introduce a corporation into our neighborhood and trust that it'll be okay and trust that City of Lakewood will enforce the regulations to make those issues go away? So, go neighborhood.
Thank you. Ms. Burrows? Ms. McGee, then Ms. Johnson. Good evening. We'll get your time restarted. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Burrows, and I've lived in my house for over 30 years, and my neighbors moved in over, a little over a year ago, and they started a short-term rental, and they said they were vetting all the people that they were going to rent to. Well, I got up one morning and looked out my bedroom window, and hears this man changing his clothes in my driveway, completely changing clothes right out there in my driveway, and he has no repercussions. It's those kind of things that really change the whole flavor of your neighborhood. And besides the fact that this changes with every couple of nights, that these different people are there, I ended up having to put a big no-parking sign in my driveway that was totally, totally ignored. More than one time, I had to go knocking on the door of the short-term rental and telling the people they had to move their car so I could use my own driveway. And these are the types of things that really change the whole flavor of your neighborhood. It causes dissension with your neighbors, and it's over people that aren't even living in your neighborhood. And I just hope that you would really consider declining that vote on short-term rentals.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. McGee, Ms. Johnson, then Mr., oh, boy, I'll just say 1114 South, because I probably butchered the last name.
Good evening. I spoke before you at your last meeting in this chamber. I'm not going to repeat those. I have a couple of words for you. I listened to an interview where you talked quite a bit about councilors need to follow the process, and it's certain councilors who don't follow the process are the problem. And yet, on February 13th, you did not follow the process, and I say shame on you, absolutely. And the other thing I want to take a minute to address is you made a comment about you did not share the same philosophy as your predecessor, and it wasn't so much the words you spoke, it was the manner that you spoke. So decorum applies to prior council members as well as constituents, as well as to each other on the dais. And I will tell you that Raimi Johnson is beyond integrity and would always take the time to listen to anybody who opposed her vote, would listen to the reasons why, and she would go all over this city to look at the impact before she took a vote. So we heard in the news, ladies, you've got to up your game. You need to up your game. Okay, so I want to talk mostly about the process here, because we seem to have a process that works one way some of the time, and it works a different way other times, depending on mostly who the mayor wants to have support something. I would like to see this council never allow what happened February 13th to happen again. There is absolutely no reason that amendments, if they're going to be put in on something after a public hearing, you don't have a public hearing when you gut an ordinance that the public thinks that they're speaking on. Those amendments should be in no later than Friday noon before the council meeting so that the public knows that these have been on the table and that's what you're considering. And it's pretty clear that you're having an awful lot of deliberations outside of the public's viewpoint, and I'd like you to remind all of you of the Colorado Open Meetings Act, which states you have to have full notice. I would say the STR public hearing was not full notice, and you cannot do these deliberations outside of the public forum with the exception of an executive session. So someone said, we're angry, we are angry. We are furious at what you did. Four years of public input, and some of you new people, you didn't even bother to find out about that, and the rest of you know better. You know better than to slap the face of the people that come down here and sometimes support you and sometimes oppose you, but we expect to be treated fairly, and we expect you to be honorable.
All right, Ms. Johnson, and then I think it's Doug, and then Mr. Walt Camp. Good evening.
Good evening to all of the ladies and gentlemen in the chamber.
Good evening to all of the ladies and gentlemen in the chamber. I am Raimi Johnson and I'm speaking on behalf of the law offices of Michael Bida and myself, both former counselors. I was on the committee that was chaired by councilperson Franks. The recommendation to allow short-term rentals and owner occupied represented a compromise. I was one of the committee members that opposed short-term rentals to begin with. I suggest that before implementing such a basic and fundamental change in Lakewood laws, expectations and way of life, it should go to a vote of the people for approval. These have been illegal since day one, yet it has never been enforced. And we need to ask ourselves why and who is to be responsible for the enforcement to begin with. Short-term rentals go against the reason to have zoning residential and commercial uses and are very different and do not mix. Enforcability is a huge issue. As a city, we do not have the current resources to adequately enforce our current laws through code enforcement. And it makes the enforcers to pick and choose who they're going to respond to. The current, what, 600 to 1,000 plus? Nobody really knows. Are operating illegally in Lakewood and they have been since day one. I am opposed to having the neighbors be the enforcers by having a complaint-driven system, which is by and large what we have in Lakewood now. It is up to the city to enforce its laws and codes and not the neighbors. Unfortunately, we do not have a history of city enforcement and to mislead the community that we will pass or that you will pass rules to protect the neighborhood from short-term rentals is dishonest. There are what, 600 to 1,000 currently operating in Lakewood? That's only a guess. Short-term rentals reduce housing inventory, the residence for residence, they increase rents and the prices of housing. As one public comment previously noted, single-family home ownership is part of the American dream and demand for live-in ownership is at an all-time high. Short-term rentals are contrary to that.
Could you wrap up your comments, please?
Yes, I will. My last comment is, is that you're opening yourselves up to potential litigation. These will deteriorate and likely constitute a public taking, subjecting the city to liability. Second, it is tantamount to a change in zoning, but without all the procedural safeguards of the zoning change, and such action is also likely to prompt legal challenges.
Wrap it up, please.
I will, thank you, in just one moment.
No, your time is up.
Elections have consequences and so do votes.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
I ask you to not vote for short-term rentals. Thank you.
Just a reminder, we have a lot of people that wish to speak, so if we can honor the timeframes, it'd be fantastic. So Doug, I'm sorry, I can't read the last name. Maybe 111 for South, Balsam? Okay, so we'll go ahead and move on. And Mr. Wolkamp, and then Ms. Benjamin. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. And I'll first say, I appreciate all of you guys, all the work you do on this STR issue. It's a very divisive, very polarizing issue. I get that based upon the comments. And I've been where you are. I ran a large HOA Linda actually talked about earlier. I will say this. I'll start off by saying I'm not opposed to all STRs, but I am opposed to poorly regulated STRs. And the red line proposal on the table, however it got there, which I don't agree with and I agree with the process comments fully, the red line proposal is truly poor STR regulation. It opens the door to allow STRs in our residentially zoned neighborhoods to be, to be operating by parties other than the onsite owners. Doing so simply creates a standalone STR motel. I did not buy into my neighborhood in Lakewood 38 years ago to live next door to a standalone motel. Not at all. I have no issue with owners renting out a spare room or, or a spare garage, or an extra garage, a room in the garage. That's okay, as long as they are on site to deal with the issues that invariably will come up. They always do. Not all STRs are bad. I'm sure there are some that are good, but there are some bad ones. And if you don't have an onsite owner to regulate that, to control it, to deal with the issues, then you're creating a problem right there. The current proposal will allow anyone, including larger, small corporations, LLCs, limited partnerships, et cetera, to buy a Lakewood property to run as a standalone STR. I have heard from several council members that they don't want to, they don't want corporations to invest. They only want small investors. Well, guess what? The current proposal does not prohibit that from happening. It doesn't differentiate between larger, small investors. That's pretty hard to do inherently. It's almost impossible to do, given, given the different nature, legal natures that you can own a property. As I said, LLCs, partnerships, et cetera. In addition, there is no language that limits the number of investor-owned STRs that can operate. How many standalone STR motels are too many in a neighborhood? 10%? 20%? 25? 30? I don't know. All I will say is, at what, at some point, a neighborhood is no longer a residential neighborhood and I don't want to live in that neighborhood. And I doubt if any of you want to live in a neighborhood with 20%. Please let me finish. Each of you have a fiduciary responsibility to be concerned, not just about short-term tax revenue or an individual's right, supposed right to make money, but about the longer, bigger issues of our neighborhood character. Please keep commercial investors out of our residential neighborhoods.
Great, thank you. Ms. Benjamin, and then Amara.
Good evening. Good evening. I am one of the illegal short-term renter owners. I own a house and the whole reason we bought the house in Lakewood and we bought it in 2019 and we couldn't afford it, honestly. So we bought a house that we could rent the basement out. We, I have four-year-old twins and because of my short-term rental, I'm able to stay home with them. I live in Ward Three and it's less than a mile from here. My guests, I'm, we've never had a problem. Our guests are families. We have basically a two-bedroom, one-bath apartment in our basement that we don't use and we're able to earn money on it to be able to support our twins. I'm able to stay home with them. We send them to preschool that we have to pay for until next year. We get some free preschool stuff. But our, our guests spend their money in Lakewood and they come back often. And we have repeat guests all the time because they love Lakewood. They spend their money in our restaurants, they shop here, they go to events here. We've never, nobody's allowed to have a party. I live upstairs, so nobody's going to have a party. We have noise hours, like quiet hours. Nobody has ever disrespected our quiet hours. Parking is not an issue. We have a separate driveway. We have a separate entrance. My neighbors actually don't even know that we run an Airbnb because we run it effectively and efficiently and we're respectful of our neighbors. So I am requesting that you vote for short-term rentals with reasonable regulations. I want to be legal. I don't want to break the law. I want to pay the license fee and do what I have to do to be on the up and up, but I don't want you to take my income away from me if you vote it down. And I don't think it needs to go to a vote in November to the whole population. But thank you for your time. Thank you for listening.
Great, thank you. So we have Amara. It looks like you're pooling with the Barthells. They're here and Mr. Fitzpatrick? Okay. So we're going to do 10 minutes and then I had to request for a break, so we'll take a break after this. Thank you.
You're going to need a break after me, Adam?
Nah, I want to keep going.
I wasn't planning on coming tonight. Six years of working on this issue. You know where I stand. I've raised issues, I've contributed reams of data, experience from municipalities in Colorado across counties, across the country and across the world. I'm an experienced person involved in real estate on all levels of landlord-ing and ownership. I'm a victim of an illegal STR in Lakewood and I'm also a former STR owner in the resort I had a death in my family on Friday night, so forgive me if I'm less organized than I usually am. Because of that, I wasn't going to be here. But because of over a dozen calls, entreaties, beggings, from citizens who know my involvement for six years and what's gone on, and some statements from some counselors on this dais, that one year of experience somehow makes them more experienced than senior counselors and citizens involved for six years, I was asked to be here tonight and bear witness to the majority will of the citizens of Lakewood. I have attended four to six study sessions going back four to six years. I have attended ward meetings across all wards, listening to and sharing feedback. I solely attended, as the sole citizen, every single housing committee meeting that was established to discuss STRs. I was there more than some of the counselors appointed in attendance, more than the mayor who appointed himself to be on that committee. I contributed, I respected the committee members who were there, listening, compiling data and hearing the residents. Never was it the will of the majority of Lakewood citizens across all wards to have short-term rentals, unbridled, investor-owned, owner absent. Most people prefer not to have them at all because they risked, they worried about the risk, knowing Lakewood's history of non-enforcement of codes. They were willing to compromise and the housing committee said, "All right, we're going to try to compromise a balance between this small special interest group and the citizens' will and some very clear and distinct intentions of certain people on this dais to make this work." So they promised and assured the citizens, "We're going to put this forward because the consensus is the citizens will accept owner occupied STRs like the neighbor just before me spoke." Those aren't the ones that generally have the problems. It's the owner absent STRs. It's the investor STRs. It's primary resident STRs. Primary resident is not the same as owner occupied. You can have a snowbird gone for six months. His house is a party house for six months. He's not there to address concerns or do maintenance. And trust me, the third-party agents don't do it. Part of what had to be and still has to be dispelled on this dais is the mythology of responsibility that the platforms Airbnb, bookings.com, Evolution, VRBO have. They don't. And the insurance that they have for themselves. So many people don't know what they don't know. So despite rolling back and saying, "Oh, we're going to put primary residents back in," you still gutted the parking, which was the number two concern. Number one concern was owner absent. Number two was parking, a long complained about issue in this town for years in residential neighborhoods, especially the ones built after the 90s that are all cul-de-sacs and don't have enough parking for the seven vehicles per home as it is. You gutted some of the other regulations. There's no enforcement, there's no budget, there's no, we're going to have three staff, full-time, budgeted to handle this. You all know it's not going to be enforced. Primary residence is going to be hard to enforce. So I'm here to bear witness to the will of the people that despite some of your statements that because you've been working on this for a year, Ms. Strom, "We are not tuned in," quote unquote. We are quite tuned in. We are quite involved, but in good faith, we agreed to allow you to put forth and vote for this owner occupied draft, which came forth not as owner occupied, but as principal residents only. Okay, people will only accept that until the travesty of February 13th, where you sneakily, in the dark hours of a late night, gutted everything easily, making this a free-for-all. And what I'm hearing from some of you is, "Oh, I'm not for corporations." Who thinks we buy your false promise that you can cherry-pick investors? You can't legally do that. If a corporation from Michigan, XYZ REIT Corporation, comes in here and applies just like Bob and Sally Smith, next door, you can't treat them differently. And you put in no limits, no caps, no, you struck the distance requirement. People were incensed, but more personally felt betrayed by people, counselors, that were elected and took an oath to represent the well-being and the welfare of your community and our neighborhoods. This was a backdoor destruction of single-family zoning in Lakewood. And maybe that is your real intention. Because one must wonder why the new counselors on this dais were so adamant about disrespecting your senior counselors, Abel, Vincent, Franks, who have worked on this for years, knowing the pros and cons, knowing the sentiments and the concerns of their constituents, knowing the problems of other municipalities that put into place a free-for-all STR ordinance like you're proposing tonight. You just not only spit in our faces, you spit in theirs. What hubris, that your one year of experience outweighs their knowledge, their hard work, their efforts to compromise? That's sad. And it says more about you than it does about them or us. And that you disrespect your citizens is suspect. Why would you be so adamant to push a special interest, commercial industries of profiteering interests above your citizens? To wit, perhaps you also plan to profit, as someone said before. I'd like to put this up on the board. At least, at least one of you has not only verbally promised to do this, but put into writing his conflict of interest, a conflict of interest that at the beginning of every meeting Mayor Adam Paul repeatedly states. There is no clearer conflict of interest than this statement from Counselor Over, who promises to work for his own monetary interest. First of all, he starts out in this email of February 24th in response to concerns about what happened on the 13th with, "I think all this talk of affordability is nonsense." Nice. He then throws the rest of you under the bus, talking about how other counselors fall all over themselves if something is described as making housing more affordable. Nice respect, just like what he calls you. "I don't believe that we should restrict STR to primary residences only." So he's, you know how he's going to vote. But here is the key paragraph that demonstrates a clear conflict of interest. "This has been shared with lawyers and former elected officials who have also taken oaths. It is definitely a legal conflict of interest and you must recuse Counselor Over from any vote tonight or in the future, as long as he remains on the dais regarding STRs." I will read this to you. "I look at myself." He goes on talking about his former STR uphill. "That was never his primary residence. Maybe someday I'll be a snowbird. To afford that, I'll have to rent out my house here while I stay in the warmer climes." To afford that, I'll have to rent out my house here while I stay in the warmer climes. I won't be there while it's being rented. Current wording of the ordinance makes that illegal. So I'm gonna have to try to change that." This is a counselor that plans to vote on an ordinance to remove owner-occupancy in primary residence so that he can monetarily profit and then go live elsewhere, because he doesn't want to live with us. "You must recuse Counselor Over." And one last point, notice what's not in this email. No mention of any concern for the well-being or welfare of his community, or his neighbors, or his constituents. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay. So we're gonna take a break, and I'll just remind folks, we have a lot more to get through. And we're gonna refrain from audible applause or discourse, so we're gonna start breaking.
All right, we'll reconvene the March thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three Lakewood City Council Meeting at nine fifteen P. M. We'll pick up on public comment, just another housekeeping note. Again, hopefully, we can keep comments to three minutes. We have about twenty-five more people signed up, so I would like to encourage the community to, if you have anything new to add, that'd be fantastic if you agree with the speaker before you, and there's still a list down here. I'd also echo that to our folks who are weighing in online with the hands up, and I will just re-mention the decorum in council chambers, no audible discourse or applause. Want to get through this, we have a lot of stuff to go through with the actual ordinance, so if you'd help me do that, that'd be fantastic. All right, next up, I have Joey, and then Brian M., and then Ms. Hale. Joey, are you still here? Eaton Street, okay. Brian M., Ward Two, there he is. Come on down then. Ms. Hale and Mr. McCowell. Hi.
Whew, hello. All right, I gotta follow the break, that's great. So, look, so, I mean, most of the councillors here, I just want to start by saying thank you for all your work on this. I've been involved with this for, I think, at least a year and a half. I think most of you know me, I've talked to a lot of you individually, I've had really good conversations with all of you, whether we agree on certain things or see things differently. I just want to say, I feel listened to, I know there's been a lot of anger directed at you tonight, but, I mean, I don't know what process you could have done better. I mean, I think that a lot of us who are more in favor of S T Rs have been talking to you and making our views known and shaping the policy, and just like people tonight who are clearly outnumbering me, you know, that's how it works, is you get involved and you, you know, try to do what you can. But, so I do just want to say thank you. I do feel like you guys have been working hard on this. And that said, I guess I'll just use the rest of my two minutes to just, maybe I'm more talking to the people behind me, but, so I, I'm in Ward Two, and I'm from Colorado, I was born here, I've lived in Lakewood fifteen years, and I'm a millennial, I think I'm maybe one of the younger people in this room, and I'm very lucky to own one house, and part of the way I pay my mortgage is by renting a room on Airbnb, and it's really cool that there's people, and I'm not being sarcastic, it's really cool, there's people in here who've lived in Lakewood for thirty, forty, fifty, seventy years, who've owned their house for thirty, forty, fifty years. That's awesome, but Lakewood is hella unaffordable right now, and one way I survive is by renting a room in my primary residence, and so, you know, I'm okay if council goes back to a primary residence requirement. I think that's reasonable, I have concerns about investors as well, I do think reasonable regulations are important, but I've done Airbnb for five years now, all my neighbors know me, all my neighbors like me, I have good relations, I haven't had issues, I've had hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of people come through my house who have visited Lakewood, and they've been great people. I've not had crazy problems, and I am booked all the time. So, you know, I know we all care about the character of our neighborhood, I understand that, I understand change, and these type of things can be threatening and concerning, but I think, you know, we have to recognize that there are multiple people who live in this city with different views on this issue, it is a polarizing issue, and, you know, we have to find a way to live with each other and respect each other's property rights. I respect people who live next to me, they respect where I live and what I want to do with my home, and I do just want to say, I hope that you guys can move forward tonight, I don't think this needs to go to November, I'd just really love to, like, get something going, and then let's do a look back. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. Ms. Hale, then, I'm sorry, it's Mr. McCool, Mr. McCoy, and then Mr. Dory, potentially. Good evening, welcome.
Hello. So, today I just want to speak in favor of short-term rentals. I've been an Airbnb host along with my husband since two thousand and sixteen. It's really been a huge blessing in my life, and I'm probably gonna parrot a lot of what he said, but I do just want to speak because there has been so much negative talk, and there's really so many benefits. So, you know, over the years, it's provided us a way to earn extra income, increase our savings, to go towards our future, plan our honeymoon and our wedding, just many life events, and that, you know, we wouldn't have been able to do otherwise. And, you know, a lot of people don't have the ability to make an extra income, you know, you have people who are older who are on fixed incomes, you have, you know, families with young children who, you know, childcare is through the roof, and I'm sorry, there's just sometimes you get capped at a certain income, and you need to have a little side hustle. You know, things that are important to note about the benefits of Airbnb are, you know, it's not all bad. People get a bad rap, not everybody is looking to party, you know, like, I rent Airbnbs every time we go on vacation. I'm not peeing off balconies, I'm not throwing parties, and none of the people who've ever hosted in my house have ever done those things. You know, many of the guests we host are people like you guys and like me, a professional, they're just travelers, old people, young people, and just for the most part, they're kind, caring, and respectful. I've never had anybody disrespect me in my home. As a host, you have control over when and how you rent your space out and who you rent it to. You know, we carefully screen people, there is a review system that both the guests and the hosts, you know, have to adhere to. When you, you know, go to an Airbnb, you get a three-star review, as a host, you know what, guests don't want to book with you, and when you get a three-star guest, review as a guest, people, you know, hosts are not gonna book their property. And so, just the fact that we are saying it's not safe, and, you know, people are trying to party all the time, it's not like that, it can be carefully regulated, and that's what we personally do. You know, when Airbnb hosts have a home, we care about the appearance, you know, more than people in my neighborhood. I live next to hoarders, I live next to people, long-term renters, who have their grass up to here and weeds everywhere, and I'm sorry, they're not the ones that are taking care of the neighborhood and making the neighborhood look nice. What do we care about? Hey, it's gonna cost, you know, it's gonna make us more money if our house looks nice, we're doing landscaping, we're, you know, painting the house, keeping things nice and keeping things updated, and I think that there's more to Airbnb than just ruining neighborhoods and people being scared, it can also be a major positive benefit in people's lives in all aspects. Thank you.
Thank you. Kirk? So, McCoy, McCool, oh, good evening, welcome. And then Denny, and then Ms. Barnett, but she might have left and joined online.
Hi, good evening. Thank you guys for the opportunity to speak and for your efforts on this, I know it's been a long, drawn-out process, and I'll try to keep it to three minutes, but I've got a lot to add. So, first and foremost, I've spoken before, I am an Airbnb host, I've been hosting since two thousand and seventeen, I do host whole-home rentals, I've got several of them, and I am full-time in this endeavor, it's how I support my family, so I'm the big bad corporation you guys are afraid of, so. That being said, I have seven children, so when we travel, we obviously have to book a whole-home rental, you know, I can't expect to endure someone that's renting, you know, my family four rooms in their house to deal with my seven children running around being a muck, so it's really the only opportunity that we have to travel. As far as, you know, our business, we do as much as we can to try and limit the bad actors. You know, everybody's up here afraid about the party. You have to keep in mind that these are investment-owned properties. If you outlaw short-term rentals, those investments are going to be turned into other avenues, whether it's a halfway house, because that is an avenue that generates a similar type of income as a short-term rental. So, this is what you have to keep in mind. The short-term rental is something that, you know, we provide value to the community. We're bringing people in that are on vacation, and what do you do when you're on vacation? You go out to eat, you spend money and shopping, you, you, your budget kind of goes out the window the minute you step on that plane, and these are the type of people that we're bringing into Lakewood, and we can take them to Arvada, Arvada's doing a great job of regulating their short-term rentals. Westminster's about to pass a law, and if you haven't looked into Westminster's law, it's kind of a one-and-done-type license where you can have one, and that's it. And as an owner, I'm okay with that, but don't give me the opportunity not to have a single entity inside the city of Lakewood. I'd like to do business with the city, I'd like to be able to bring guests into the city, and I do believe that we provide a quality, you know, outcome for our neighbors. I have had a couple of parties, I won't deny that, it's happened, but so is a long-term tenant, so, I mean, some of you guys have had parties that upset your neighbors, I'm sure. It's something that kind of happens, and I don't think it happens more often in a short-term rental than it does in a regular family home. So, we just have to keep all of that in mind when we're making these decisions. So, I urge you and implore you to find a solution that works, and it's not going to please everyone, that's impossible to please everyone, but let's find something that we can do that's gonna make everybody be able to shake hands and live with each other at the end of the day. And that's why I implore you to look at possibly that one-and-done-type-style license, something of that nature, so that we can have accountability, but yet we are still giving people opportunity. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Denny, and Michelle, again, I don't think Michelle's here anymore, and then Kathy Porteas.
Thank you very much for giving me a moment to speak. I want to thank all of you for being here. I am in awe of all of you, especially for those of you who are here to support a vote no, and that's what I'm asking of you tonight, is to vote no. I am very strongly against this, and I have a dollar in my hand. The reason is, is that I want to ask you, what is the price of a child's safety? Tell me, how much would it cost to save children? You're letting in strangers. We have children in my neighborhood who are walking to elementary school, we have increased traffic if you start bringing these people in, I mean, it is not a hotel, but yet you're letting people come in like this. I have people that next door rented out their house for seven people, thirty showed up for a week. Everybody on our street locked themselves in because they were raging, party, beer cans, out of control. I don't want to live like that, I wouldn't expect any of you to live like that, I wouldn't expect any of you to live like that. We live in Lakewood because we want to live in a safe community, where we can enjoy our senior people, where we can enjoy our children, where you can feel safe that kids are walking to street and not crossing over drunk people on the sidewalk, or getting hit by cars because people are partying at night. My street, when there aren't any Airbnb people there, the kids get to play in the street, it's safe. When they are there, everybody locks everything down. That's not a good way to live, and, and I understand, you're trying to make money. Why not go long-term with a roommate who is stable? Why not rent your basement out to another family who's starting out or struggling, that you can depend on, that will be there, and actually joins the neighborhood and becomes a part of the neighborhood? I'm not trying to keep anybody from making money, but let's make money in a good community neighborhood where we know who we're dealing with, who we know who we're talking to, you know, who aren't gonna leave their trashcans out in the street, or, you know, run over somebody's cat and dog. It's just, what I've seen so far of it, it's not pretty, it's not nice, I don't want it. I'm asking each one of you, please, please, let's vote no. There are hotels, long-term rental is great, let's go with that. It's proven track record, and lastly, it's insurable. For all of you that have been doing these Airbnbs, no offense, but it's been illegal, you are breaking the law, and that's not what we want in our community. We want you to, to be a part of the community and do it legally, and respect your neighbors. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Porteas, Mr. Smith, is it Mr. Wesley?
Thank you.
Good evening.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, this is my first time doing this, so I'm really nervous, and I didn't eat any dinner, so I'm starving, but this is so important to me, so I'm just gonna speak from my heart. I have been living in Lakewood, love Lakewood. I have been living next to an illegal Airbnb for years. I have to be honest with you, I never knew that it was illegal. I just assumed that he could do anything he wanted. I have to be honest with you, I was single for years, and I was always nervous with people coming in all hours of the day and night, talking right past my bedroom, they have to walk in between the houses to go downstairs into the basement. My grandchildren have their rooms when they stay over my house. In the summertime, I don't use the air conditioner, so I leave the windows open, and they have to hear all this stuff going through, and it scares me because my son doesn't want to send the kids to my house. I mean, I shouldn't have to live this way, but, and I know that I can get them, the code enforcement and get things done, but I've had issues with this person prior to this with putting an illegal fence in, so there's already a lot of problems there. So, I want to keep the peace, but I do have to implore to you, please, I have, cannot tell you how many times, I have a phone of all the pictures of all the cars every single week, different cars, different people coming in and out, different, and it's just not safe, it's not, it's not fair to live this way, and I implore you to please vote no, because it's, it's just a scary thing for the neighborhood and for the people. Last year, I turned around and I got up and I'm looking out, and there's a pair of male shorts on my, on my lawn, and I look over and there's sneakers, and then there's a cellphone, and then there was, someone had gotten sick in my lawn, and I'm like, ah, you know, so I picked all this stuff up, my friend found out whose phone it belonged to, and it was a friend of whoever was there, and he said, yeah, he got, you know, a little drunk, and, and I wish I took pictures of it, because it was an eye-opener for me that this is not a healthy thing, but at the time, I didn't know it was illegal for Airbnb, I had no idea, and I think the public really needs to know it's illegal, or if it's not, then they need to know. So, I, I implore you, please vote no, for all the people's voice, I thank you for, for letting me have a voice tonight, and, ooh, twenty-five seconds. And I just want to say, I, I really think that each one of you really have a hard task to follow in these procedures, so, I don't know, I don't think I could do it, but I appreciate you for taking on this, and I just thank you, Mayor, for, for taking this time. Oh, four minutes.
You did a great job for your first time, nicely done. Mr. Smith, Mr. Wesley, then Mr. Adams.
Good evening, Council. First, I want to say, I thank you guys, I think you guys have really listened to me anytime I've come up and spoken, so I really do appreciate that. You guys all know my story, I'm a transient millennial, I've lived with four people to be able to own my house, and Airbnb, when I have to move away and take care of my grandparents, gives me an opportunity to be able to hold on to my house. So, I'm here today to talk to you about the concerns regarding short-term rental laws around institutional investors, safety standards, as well as housing affordability stemming from our February thirteenth meeting. I'm hoping to provide some reassuring, as well as inspiring facts around these concerns. First, I want to talk about the concerns around institutional investors dominating the short-term rental market. I agree, we talked about last time, limiting it to one person, or one person owning one property at a time, I think that's a great idea. However, I don't agree with the primary residents, so that's another piece I won't talk on. But backing up that fact, a McGill University study suggests that the proliferation of short-term rental ownership by institutional investors can have a negative impact on long-term housing affordability for residents. They found that it strongly correlated with every ten percent increase of institutional investors coming into a market, there's a point four-two percent increase in rental prices, and I think by limiting it, as you guys have proposed, and ultimately keeping it as three hundred short-term rentals that we have today, I have sixty-seven thousand houses in the Lakewood area would be beneficial. With regard to the concern of affordable housing, some other individuals have talked about it, and I talked about it last time, homeowners can use on average, or gain on average, nine thousand dollars of additional annual income from short-term rentals that they're able to offset their cost of their mortgage or rent, making it easier for them to remain in their home and in the Lakewood community. According to a survey by Airbnb, eighty-three percent of hosts said their earnings from short-term rentals help them afford their houses and avoid foreclosures. As it relates to individuals and families who can buy a home, National Bureau of Economic Research and Brookings Institution found no evidence to, to support that having owner occupied or individuals that actually live in that community instead of institutional investors owning that have a major effect on housing prices. Last, regarding safety standards, Councilmember Abel, we talked about, or you talked about this last time, short-term rental platforms like Airbnb and Verbo have implemented measures through their review systems that we've talked about earlier, and super host status to ensure high standards are maintained for their properties. Airbnb rewards hosts to receive positive reviews and obtain the benefit of improved search rankings, increased earnings for individuals that have a four-point-eight out of five stars over a twelve-month period. I have more, but I have twenty seconds left, so I'm just gonna conclude very quickly. In conclusion, I hope you're not deterred by the concerns around safety standards and housing affordability, and said, I hope you understand the consequences of institutional investors who are willing to embrace short-term rental-friendly laws that make Lakewood a vibrant, inclusive, and prosperous community for its residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wesley, then Mr. Adams, and then that's all the lists I have up here, but I know there's lists down there, too.
Hi, my name is Mark Wesley, Ward Three, and I lived in, in different cities, lived in New York, I lived in Denver, and now I'm living in Lakewood. And if you had asked me eight years ago what I thought of short-term rentals, I would say, sure, fine, but since then, I've had the experience of living next to, to short-term rentals, one about three blocks, sorry, three houses on one side, and one, three houses up the other side of the block, and to say, to, the least is, it's been incredibly problematic. I mean, it's been voiced over and over passionately by some of the people here of some of those concerns, the negative concerns that I faced, it's, it's not been a good situation. So, basically, let the people decide, let the people vote, that's all I have to say. Of two minutes and twelve seconds, let the people decide.
Appreciate that, thank you. Mr. Adams?
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone, I'll try to keep this short. We're in Ward Three, Charlie Adams. I had a lot of things I was gonna say tonight, but I'm gonna keep it short. I'm in favor of reasonable S T Rs. It seems extraordinarily outrageous that we have six hundred to a thousand, is it really three hundred, did somebody just say? Three hundred illegal S T Rs in Lakewood. You know, it seems like we ought to do, get some regulations on the board so that we can get people regulated and back in compliance with the law. I've used S T Rs all over the country and all over the world, actually, and it's always been a wonderful experience, and I was on the H O A Board of one of the Belmar row home communities for six years, and the organizations and the houses that we had the most trouble with were the long-term renters. Honestly, they were growing marijuana in the garages, they were having huge parties, and getting rid of them was impossible. With short-term rentals, if it's a problem, they're gone in three to five days or something like that. I think one owner, one property is a reasonable rule, and, you know, I don't know how you define owner, maybe corporate entities are not positive, but, you know, as an individual having a home here in Lakewood, if we could rent part of it out at times, that would help us out, and we're senior citizens, so I don't know how that qualifies us. But anyway, please enact an S T R regulation in a reasonable manner, and a lot of work has gone into this, it's been several years, right, that we've been messing around with this. I was in this meeting, February two thousand and twenty-two, I think, when you guys were supposed to vote it up and down, and you didn't, and then I, I wasn't even here for the February thirteenth, I'm gonna have to go see what happened, it sounds like something really crazy happened, and so, I'm gonna go back and see what happened, but I hope tonight you'll just vote up or down. Let's just, let's get something on the books and move on. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I have Ms. Davis, then Mr. Brewster, then Ms. McKeon, and that exhausts the list in here, and then I have a list of folks on, online. So, I'm sorry, we don't, we only allow you to pool if you have three people.
Oh, okay, no worries.
Good evening.
It's not, but okay. Hi, everybody. My name is Latonya Davis, and I'm just wondering when the city of Lakewood and you, Mayor, are going to rule this a homicide? When are you gonna rule our mother's death a homicide? Here are pictures of her frozen in a ditch. You guys said she walked off. Hold on, let me go. Can you guys see these okay?
Yeah.
Can you see that?
Uh-huh.
Somebody hit her in the head with a hammer, okay? According to the report that Detective Sarah Palahas, there was a hammer at the scene, all right? She was abducted at four-thirty-six in the morning. Why did the detectives take that out of the Why did the detectives take that out of the video that Mr. Nelson Gomez gave to me? And this report states that our mother was in this ditch twice. January 24th and February 1st. Can you tell me why she was there twice, sir? Anybody on the panel? Anybody? I am talking to the racist people. Look at my mother right here in a ditch, frozen, frozen! Racists, bigots, lily white crackers, where y'all at? Who did this to our mother? Who was released from the hospital? Tell me why there are no finger footprints. She didn't have shoes on. Where are her footprints? Every place that I called in this report, where did it go? In my report, where your homicide team that was on the scene first? 10 places. State, we never spoke to anybody from the Department of Lakewood. They never called Catholic Charities. They never called the Denver Rescue Mission, who are for men only. They never called the Presbyterian that has been closed for three years. These people are willing to testify, okay? Why was the video altered of our mother being abducted at 4:36? You guys want to see the video? Anybody want to see the video? Anybody? Y'all want to see the video? Here we go. Watch this. Let me show you. They show me a video of a white lady walking at 5:41 in the morning on the 7th. That was Detective Sarah Pallett, who states in here, "Sometimes we find them frozen in ditches because they have dementia from walking." My mother didn't have dementia. Let me show you this video. They altered Mr. Gomez's, Nelson Gomez, he was here last time. They altered the video. You don't see her at 2:44 from his video, don't say time. And you don't see her at 4:36. They took that part out. Why did they kill my mother? Anybody? Somebody, anybody? Oh, and one other thing. The property over there that's registered, where your detective in here says, "I spoke with the apartment complex manager at 594 Webster." It's owned by the city. It's owned by the city. It is a field. This is the field right here. This is owned by the city. I'll be back in two weeks.
Great. Thank you.
I'll be back, because we're not done yet. And I'll be back with 10 people, so that way I have more minutes, right?
Right?
You guys are so quiet. No one has said condolences or anything.
Yes, she did.
I'm not talking about the people back here, I'm talking about these lily white crackers up here. Nobody has said condolences or anything.
We certainly did last week.
I promised you a lawsuit, right?
Encouraged you to continue.
Your name is right there. I was waiting on this police report. It's coming.
It's okay.
It's coming, sir.
We certainly wish your family the best.
It's coming. No, 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 don't wish us the best. You need to wish Lakewood the best. Because after I sue you guys, you're going to need all the fucking money. Believe that. Who walks in a ditch? You put my mom there.
Thank you.
And I got the evidence. It's coming. What you looking at? Why you looking at me all ugly? Strong? Strong, what's your name? Did y'all catch that?
Okay, so.
Look where your son at. Your son is probably in a ditch somewhere. Check the ditches, check the coves. My mother was there twice.
Okay, Ms. Davis.
I'm telling you.
We appreciate your comments. Thank you.
No, you don't. No, you don't.
Because if you did, you wouldn't listen to all these people.
She was in a ditch, twice.
Okay.
Why did you alter the video, twice?
Next up, we have Mr. Brewster and then Ms. McKean.
This town is going down. 1940, they owned 594 Webster, fucking field.
Good evening.
Thanks. My condolences to Ms. Davis. So I want to come up here and stand in support of STRs. And I read through your legislation. I think it looks great. I think you guys have worked hard on it. I read the history of it. Thank you for all the work you've done. I'm kind of a late player in this game, just, but I built, recently have built an ADU in my backyard and was hoping to at least have the opportunity to look at the STR option. And, and so I'm glad that you guys are going to take action on it. A couple of things, I don't want to repeat all the things that have already been said, but I am in, I own a STR up in Leadville. It's a 145-year-old building. I live across the street from the mayor. Love the place, loves the fact that I take great care of it. It's 145-year-old building, so it requires a little work. And, and I can say that, you know, there's not a lot of parties and there's not a lot of activity like that. What I can say is that I do live next to somebody who has an STR today and I live next to somebody who has a long-term rental. And the long-term rental, you can just, I mean, if you just look at them, the long-term rental is weeds, blight, a mess. The short-term rental is, this man has spent probably 3/4 of a million dollars to renovate this entire place to make it just beautiful. He's spent tremendous amounts of money. And he, I think, deserves the right to be able to earn that income from it. I think I do too, if I decide to go down that path. And so again, I hope you guys see you, see you through to support this. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. Ms. McKean? And that's the last of my list in here. So I will close this part and then move to our digital. Good evening.
Thank you all. It's been a long night. So appreciate everything that you guys are trying to do for us. So I have a Airbnb. Live in Lakewood, lived there 23 years. We have a little ADU in the back of our house. My mother-in-law lived there for 17 years. Rent-free. We took care of her until she had to go to a nursing home. And after that, we decided to try to turn it into an Airbnb and see how that went. And I, you know, I feel bad. I know a lot of people here have not had a great experience. It's been a really wonderful experience for us. We've met incredible people. We've hosted people from all over the world. They are repeat guests that come back every year for the last four or five years. They support Lakewood economy. We don't have loud parties. We have adequate parking. We live on-site, so we are there to greet our guests and let them check in. And we are, we've made, some, some of our best friends now are some of our guests that have been at our Airbnb. I have rheumatoid arthritis, so I was unable to continue with my career that I had for 25 years. So this is a way for me to participate in our family's income. And that's been huge for us, so it's been a good experience. Just to speak to the very nice lady with the dollar bill that spoke earlier about the crime and all these different things that have occurred. When the, we live off of Sixth and Garrison and when the light bulb went in, I cannot tell you the amount of crime that has occurred since that has happened. Homeless, crime, strangers litter, people roaming in the streets. I mean, you want to talk about strangers coming into your neighborhood? We have people coming in from all different cities into our area. The Safeway, I live at the, the, the station at Garrison and Colfax. I can't even shop at the Safeway that I've been going to for 23 years because it's so unsafe to go there anymore. I can't even refer our Airbnb guests to go there anymore because it's an unsafe place to go. So our guests that are coming in from Florida and Tennessee and Texas, and there are nice couples coming in to go see a show at Red Rocks. They're not partiers, not crazy people. They're not somebody who's coming in to cause a ruckus. I understand that there's probably some situations that it occurs. We have a halfway house across the street from our house and it's, I don't feel necessarily safe, but it, the house doesn't look good. It's not well-kept up, but ours is. And it's a main source of income for us. We really try to take care of our, it, it's a business for us. And I really hope that you guys will consider that that is something that is, for most of us, that's what this is. And I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to move online and 10 hands up online. So we'll go ahead and start with 9822. If you give us your name and address or name and ward for the record, we'll get you started. Good evening. Caller 9822, you are in the meeting. Going once, twice, okay? We'll go ahead and move into caller 4918. If you give us your name and address or name and ward, start your three minutes.
Yes, Anthony McCloskey, Ward 3. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, residents in attendance. Short-term rentals provide a source of income to both owner and city. It's also a way that the owner can keep the property without having to sell it or get into a long-term lease with a potential disruptive or damaging tenants. Also, it could provide a means for residents for traveling nurses, traveling doctors, and specialists. We inherited a family home and if we cannot do a short-term rental, they would have to sell it and won't be able to afford to move back to Lakewood on a short notice when my job transfers back to the metro area. I ask all council members to be fair and just when considering STR stipulations such as licensing. If one was to rent long-term and midterm, they wouldn't have to pay for a license. This would be a potential loss of funds to the city. Inspections. Hotels, long-term rentals do not have to have health inspections according to OSHA 29 CFR 1910. In good faith with the owner, the supplies in working condition, fire extinguishers, carbon monoxide detectors, smoke detectors, emergency exit routes identified and posted, along with emergency numbers, and also carries insurance with an umbrella policy should be sufficient and lessen the burden on the owner and the city. Primary residence should be scratched if the owner uses a primary or a property management company to assist in rental contracts. The focus on noise ordinance, hosting no parties, and handles the complaints. Neighbors adjoining properties, if you rent long-term or midterm, you don't have to contact the neighbors. Also, what do you do if the, all the neighbors happen to be long-term renters? I just ask that you continue on with this motion. It's been long in effect and I thank you all for the, the job that you've done. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Next, we'll bring over Lena. And if you give us your address or ward, we'll get you going. Just a reminder, when you're at 30 seconds, you'll hear a, when you're up, you'll hear that again. Go ahead, Lena, if you want to unmute.
Oh, sure. Sorry about that.
That's all right.
I was on the phone too, so let me, let me hang up the phone. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah. Good evening.
Hello?
Yep, we can hear you loud and clear. Lena? Okay. Well.
Mute.
We can hear you.
Hello?
Hi.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep.
I'm sorry about that.
That's okay.
Um, this is a, it's a little bit challenging here online.
That's all right.
This is Lena O'Brien. I'm from Ward 4, been a resident of Glenon Heights for about 15 years now. And I really recommend, I, I requested the city council put this to a vote of the people in November and not vote on this issue tonight. I'm particularly concerned with the ordinance because it opens up a loophole for corporations to purchase homes and then rent them out as short-term rentals. And this will create a lot of issues in my neighborhood. First of all, I mean, we talked about short-term rental, renters often cause noise issues, which will take up the valuable time of our local responders who have to respond to these complaints. And corporate owners of short-term rentals will not necessarily maintain their properties like private owners do. This could easily harm the character of my neighborhood. Third, short-term rentals will drive up housing prices even more and make housing less affordable in our community. Corporations have very deep pockets and they can easily outbid private individuals when purchasing homes. STRs will cause our property taxes to go up. Fourth, our school enrollments are already decreasing. In my neighborhood, the Glenon Heights Elementary School had to close for this very reason. But ownership by, by rental corporations will continue to undermine our school system. Fifth, we should really be thinking about the hotel industry, which is an important contributor to our local economy. This creates a lot of competition with the hotel industry. Six, unoccupied homes, you know, when they are unoccupied, can attract squatters. And if homes are not continuously rented or occupied, squatters can move in, further degrading our community. Our residential neighborhoods are not zoned for hotels, so why should we have these makeshift hotels in our midst? There are so many reasons not to allow short-term rentals in our residential communities, particularly by corporations. And I've outlined some of those reasons. I appreciate you listening tonight, but I, but I respectfully request that the city council not vote on this measure tonight and put it to a vote of the people. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you.
Great.
Next up, we have Brian. Come over and give us your name and address. We'll start your time. You're in. Good evening, Brian. You're up.
Hey, you're sorry about that. Audio is okay? You can hear me?
Yes, sir. Listen here. Go ahead.
Appreciate it. Brian, Ward 4. Listed some comments online, so I appreciate you all that have already taken a look at those. And I'll make brief use of my time here this evening. I just wanted to point out a few things. Along with the Lakewood Short-Term Rental Alliance and all of those in our group, we very much appreciate all the work that you've done. It's tireless and thankless and no one wants to be in your shoes. So thanks for continuing to slug this out. There won't be any winners. My father always taught me negotiation when it's successful has both parties leaving the table a little dissatisfied, right? And so we want to work with our neighbors. We understand nothing's going to be perfect. And so again, wanted to just highlight a couple of points here. I'm, I'm concerned about the fear and hysteria that seems so present. We all obviously are homeowners in this city. Those of us that have been here for more than a decade, some for many decades. We care very much about the community. I think the young man that identified as a millennial really hit it on the head tonight. Made some really salient points that I hope council considers as we work towards passing a reasonable ordinance that allows us to do what we, what we'd like to do as a homeowner, homeowners' rights, whether it's short-term or long-term. I'm just concerned that there's so much fear and hysteria around parties which are illegal for Airbnb, which is a very large platform. But you can't host large parties on Airbnb. And the number of complaints, right, would speak to all of the issues. If there were that many out there and per records from city council over the years, there just haven't been that many complaints coming into code enforcement. Instead, you don't hear about the hundreds, thousands of quietly successful transactions. So please consider that. I'm definitely in favor of thinking about a one or two limit per homeowners. I don't agree that people should be snatching properties off the market. We want to encourage families to move here as well. But for someone like our family who has an active-duty military member serving their country across another side of the world with an empty basement, it just makes sense. We might do a 28-day rental or a two-night rental. So perhaps limiting, you know, the, the quantity of properties that can be rented warrants further consideration. Lastly, I really think that there needs to be more consideration on a stipulation that requires a 24/7, 24 hours a day, seven days a week responsible party. It doesn't need to be the homeowner. In our case, in many cases, it is. We care. But if you have a responsible party there to address anything that comes up, any time of day or night, that's something I know short-term rental owners have been doing for four and five years. It's how we maintain five-star ratings. Thanks for hearing me out tonight. I'll give you back 17 whole seconds. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Next up, we have K1. If you give us your name and address, we'll start you. You are in. Just go ahead and unmute. Start six to unmute, K1. Start six to unmute, K. One. All right, you're unmuted, please. Going once, twice, all right. We'll go ahead and go to Ms. Barnett. I think you signed up earlier when you were here.
Eric, can you hear me?
Yep, good evening.
Everyone, sorry, I was there earlier, but I had to leave, and appreciated listening to everyone's comments. I am in favor of short-term rentals as the co-founder of the Lakewood Short-Term Rental Alliance. Just want to say also that I appreciate our new counselors on the Housing Policy Commission, you know, for their common sense perspectives. So, I know there were, there was something that happened last meeting, which I don't know what that was all about, but I just wanted to express my appreciation. And a lot of the opposition tonight, to me, is a lot of, you know, scare tactics and what-ifs, and I think, you know, the, of a look-back period is not a bad idea, so we can see how it goes. So, I guess everything else has already been said, so thanks and good luck tonight.
Great, thank you. And finally, the last one with their hand up in the online queue is Karen. So, good evening, welcome. Give us your name and address, we'll get you going.
Hi, this is Nick McCoy, Karen's husband.
Oh, good evening.
Here in, we are on ninety-seven seventy-five West Twenty-second in Ward two, and I just want to say you guys have worked on this so hard, and in the last meeting, you came up with a good plan that I think is going to keep the city from getting sued like New Orleans with that Interstate Commerce Clause by allowing someone to have one rental that protects you from that lawsuit. And I really don't want to see the city going into a lawsuit and costing us money. So, I support STRs and I appreciate everything you've all done, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, anybody else online? All right, we will close public comment, and it is now ten oh-three, so we will come back at ten fifteen, and I have already two lights up, Councilor Sherazai and Councilor All right, we'll reconvene the March thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three City of Lakewood City Council meeting at ten seventeen, and procedurally, Council Clerk, will you please read item nine into the record?
Item nine, ordinance O. twenty-twenty-three dash five, adopting Title V, Chapter 5.55 of the Municipal Code of the City of Lakewood, Colorado, in connection with establishing business and license regulations for short-term rentals, all within the City of Lakewood, Colorado.
Okay. Now, just to clarify, Ms. McKinney-Brown, as this is a continuation, there is the existing motion on the floor, so we don't need to read anything else in. Either we make amendments going forward, and then the final motion would be to either adopt or deny based upon the amendments, correct?
Correct. The main motion on the floor at this point is to adopt ordinance O. twenty-twenty-three dash five.
Okay. And one other piece of housekeeping that will help council follow along, in your packet, and for the folks that are here on the dais, so this was sent out and it's in your packet, there is the amendments to the draft ordinance as it was presented for consideration at second reading on February thirteenth, twenty-twenty-two. It's five pages, so this essentially is everything that was done at the February thirteenth meeting. So, with that, I will turn it to Councilor Sherazai.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So, as we mentioned at the start of this evening before public comment started, you know, I want to clarify, my intention with the amendment on February thirteenth was really to support our aging population, who are going to increasingly need to look at potential support on their fixed incomes to stay in their homes. We've heard from others around the community that we're not going to be able to build ourselves out of these issues, and so, if we want people to be able to stay in their communities, they'll likely have to stay in their homes, and my intention with the amendment was to help regulate and disallow, you know, our communities to lack the vibrancy that we all desire. But I, I want to reinforce that I've heard from the community, and I'm very open to changing my mind. I was never dug into this. This was meant to be an effort to regulate that. So, with that being said, I do want to offer an amendment to, I move to amend the ordinance as presented by removing the proposed amendments to section 5.55090, paren B, and then all subsequent edit, or amendments as a consequence of that amendment.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, and to clarify, in this document, 5.5509B- Okay, so we have a motion and a second, and to clarify, in this document, 5.5509B is the main, the secondaries which had to be changed, and why there is, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight other pieces are ancillary to that main one. So there's a motion and a second. If there are questions, so there's 55.01ON, 5.5501OT, 55.5501U, and again, these all refer to kind of that whole home versus owner occupied. Counselor Franks?
Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to make sure, I've had several questions as I've been sort of meeting with people tonight, and there was just a lot of confusion. So I want to be really clear on where we started before that amendment was made that Counselor Sharazai just talked about was that it was basically the, sort of how do I term this? It was the primary residence. So if I'm an owner of the home and I'm there, it's my primary residence, it's where I usually return and all of those terms that go with it, then if I am away from the home two weeks in Europe on vacation, I would be able to rent it out. Or if I had maybe a basement unit where I'm upstairs and I can rent out the basement. So it was really giving those same homeowners that were just spoken about who need that extra income. They have more house than they need, but they're also very invested in the neighborhood, they care about that, they have made friends, they've all got all these connections, there are support structures there. So that's what that piece means, that's what we're rolling back to is that it is your, you own it, you are, it's your primary residence, your usual place of return, then you would be able to then have, apply for an STR license and be able to rent rooms out or the whole house while you are away. So I just wanted to clarify that to make sure folks understand. And so what that does, it takes out the concern in the community where the language was not clear around the one per person because of business entities. It takes all of that confusion off the table and goes back to what I think I can look to Counselor Vincent on, that that was what the majority of the community landed. It takes us back to the spot where we had good support. People felt it was a good compromise, and it accomplished many objectives. So I just wanted to kind of set that stage a little bit more so folks knew what we were voting on.
Okay, I have Counselor Abel then over.
As Counselor Abel said before, I have an action amendment that I want to add.
Okay, so an amendment to this amendment?
I, more or less, yes. I move that we send this to a vote in November. We have the blessing of living in a state that allows direct democracy. We also have a mayor who, when we were looking at our comprehensive plan, the mayor recognized there were no protections.
Point of order. We have a motion on the, I have a point of order, I'm just curious, is this amendment able to be heard since we have an amendment, a motion on the floor?
You have the main motion on the floor, which was your tabled action, which was to adopt ordinance 02023-5. You now have a secondary motion on the floor, which is to amend the ordinance as presented by removing the proposed amendments to 5.5509OB and all amendments made in support of that amendment. At this time, you cannot accept another secondary motion. You have to complete the first secondary motion, and then you can take up this other business.
Okay, so we'll come back to that. Counselor Oliver to this motion?
Okay, so I'm sorry, but I missed some of the early part of the meeting, and so we have backed up now. It sounds like I understand what's going on, but we backed up to only primary residents are allowed to have STRs. That's where we're going now.
Correct. That's the motion.
Okay, right. I have nothing more to, well, yes, I do have something to add to that because now we're back to, we're going to be in direct violation, not violation. We already know that the District Court in New Orleans struck down their STR regulation because it only allowed primary residents. And I still have the problem that if we do the exact same thing, this ordinance is going to be struck down immediately or interrupted or whatever the legal term is, and we will have spent all this time for zero. And so I'm not for this vote, I think, right now. But that's enough for me for now. I'll have more later.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Franks, is this to the motion?
It's directly to the concern about the emotion, motion. That is a ruling that was out of the Fifth Circuit. We are in the Tenth Circuit, and if you look at the primary resident and you look at the metro area, Denver has that and many other municipalities. I have a matrix if we need to review that, but we are by no means would be the outlier in this situation. In fact, it's more the norm. So I just wanted to speak to that. We are under the Tenth Circuit.
Counselor Springsteen to the motion?
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate as an attorney that even though we are not in the Fifth Circuit, the, if the Tenth Circuit does not have law directly on point, a circuit may consider law in other circuits. And I, I'm not saying that I disagree with the motion, I'm just correcting somebody who's not an attorney on this council that, yes, law in other circuits can apply to our circuit.
Counselor Abel?
Thank you, Mayor. I believe the Ninth Circuit has ruled that you cannot enforce a camping ban unless you have room, a place for everyone who wants shelter to have shelter. That does not apply to us. We have camping bans in Denver. We have a camping ban in Aurora, I believe. It does not directly cross over. Just to clarify.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion on the amendment? Okay, seeing none, please cast your votes. Counselor Franks, could you please, oh, I'm sorry. I didn't, I didn't see you were gone. Could somebody vote for Counselor Oliver, please? Nay. Passes nine, I, two nay, the nay being Oliver and Abel. Okay, Counselor Abel?
Thank you, Mayor. We also have a generous charter that allows us to put, to evoke any resolution or ordinance that has been passed and approved. So going on that, I move that we send this to a vote of the Lakewood citizens in November.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on this proposed amendment. Counselor Maia Guerrero?
Thank you. While I really appreciate the heartburn of the community for the process of making policy, I do want to just point out that you, we are a representative democracy, and we are all here elected to make difficult decisions on behalf of the voters, and I really appreciate the amount of human beings that came out. We just, you know, really changed back in ordinance based on that community feedback. So I think it's really clear that we have leadership here who are really trying to listen and really pay attention. But if we put every controversial issue to a vote of the people, then we are really doing a disservice to the people of Lakewood, in my opinion. And I also want to clarify on the process in general that, yes, amending on second reading is difficult, and it can feel very fast, but that is the actual chartered way that we create policy. It's how we legislate on every issue that we've had to do. And so I just want to assure people who maybe, you know, weren't following along as closely, that that is the regular way that we are able to amend things that come before this body. I'm really glad that we were able to do this continuation and continue this study so that we can get it a little closer to right, and this idea that we will continue to chew on this in a year or two as we have more information on how it's going. But I think that we have taken a lot of time on this issue, and people deserve to have some predictability and some solid process and bureaucracy in place in order to deal with this critical issue.
Okay, I have Counselor Springsteen, Franks, Oliver, Abel, Strom.
Yeah, I just wanted to take issue with some of these comments. I feel that what we saw tonight is a big portion of the public who's saying, you are not respecting us, you are not respecting our wishes, you are not respecting the amount of time that went into this, and, and how, you know, invested people are in this community. And so when you talk down to the voters and say, no, 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 we have to, we have to step in and decide for them, I think that's a great amount of hubris to have. I have thought from the very beginning on this issue that this is something that should go to the voters, because this is a lose-lose for us. We heard that tonight, that people feel very strongly one way or the other. And yeah, it's a representative democracy, but if we don't, if we don't know what the right vote is for the public, we should, we should send it to the voters to decide. There are certain issues along those lines. And so some of the disrespect that I've seen toward the public with this issue has just been astounding. I mean, we have, we had the mayor saying if people were too animated in chambers, that he was going to start, he was threatening to start taking breaks like he always does, to shut people up. And then, you know, we had this 11th hour amendment that, I mean, this whole thing was going along kind of okay until this 11th hour amendment at the February 13th meeting. And I hope people take stock of that, because what that is, is members of your council not respecting your wishes, not respecting that shocking things that are put on the agenda at the last minute so that the public cannot weigh in or understand what those amendments are, is not okay. You know, I think that that's the bottom line, is that this is not for us to decide, this is for the public to decide. We can't possibly do it the right way for them. It's too split down the middle. Now, I know, you know, that I'm going to support what I think I hear people asking for, but I just don't think that, I think it's hubris for us to think that we should decide this on behalf of them.
Counselor Franks?
Just wanted to make a couple points. One, I would like to see if Counselor Abel would be amenable to allowing us to cut through some of the other, because again, if you are, if you do want to take this to the ballot, and if that's something that the majority of council decides, there's still some other things that need to be addressed. And so I would ask that we just, you know, it comes just later, let some of us who have some additional things that we want to get in there, because certainly it's a work product that needs to be as close to done as possible. So I would just throw that there, please, please think about that. But I did want to talk to a couple other things. I wanted to talk to process.
Can I, can I clarify one thing real quick? And I know we're not prepared potentially to talk about this, but what were to potentially get sent to the ballot tonight may not be the same thing, because it has to go through a ballot review and a whole lot of other things. So if something is prepared tonight, it may not look like this. It might just be a simple, does the City of Lakewood want to have these or not, and then it would come back for the regulations.
Right, but, but we would have had a solider foundation upon which to build. No, I understood that, and the city attorney explained all that to me. So no, I appreciate that, but, so yeah, so I appreciate that. Don't know that I'd be in support of that. What I want to talk through is just making sure that the public knows about the process. The fact that we can bring amendments when we're on second reading, that is not a process violation. I think it is not best practice. I think it is certainly something that, when it's major, it needs a conversation. I believe that we also have a, what I would call the best practices, when we're wanting to do an amendment, that we would consult with our city attorney, because there's, that's where the expertise lives, where they can kind of look at what we're proposing, see what those impacts will be, and it gets a chance to, you know, sort of not do that from the dais. So there are some best practices that I think that we could really ensure going forward. It helps us all be more effective. I don't think there'd be any disagreement there, but I wanted to say that there was nothing that was done illegally, or somebody did something that wasn't, you know, that didn't comply with law. But what I would also agree on is representative government. I certainly know that my community, I ran specifically on representative government and committed to my community that I would never ever vote my personal interest, ever. I would always reach out and try to get as much information as I could. And I do honestly believe, after being in this issue for three-plus years, and the, I would now say thousands of contacts, I do believe I'm in a good position to understand what the community wants. And again, I do believe that's my job. Not saying how I would vote if we got to that point. I certainly would want to really consider that, but I do think it is my job. I think it's a difficult job. I have studied hard. I have brought, in case we needed to go down a different path tonight, I just want you all to know I came prepared with every bit of research on business entities and that. This isn't done lightly. I don't think any of us do this lightly. And I just want you to know that I'm well-prepared, and I will do my absolute level best to represent you tonight.
Counselor Abel, do you want to speak to the question about your amendment?
I do. I'm not willing to withdraw it. It's been mischaracterized. Last, last time we discussed this issue, we rode head-on into an ambush. And, and there is plenty of precedent for it. I will point to the trash hauling vote that we had. We, it was a difficult thing. The city was split, and we sent it to a vote the year before I was on council. There is a lot to be said for direct democracy. That's why we have it in the Constitution. If we no longer represent the consensus of our voters, then we need to put it back in their hands. I mean, I am not, I am not sure which way this vote would go, but I would certainly like to see, and I would like to give them, give our voters the right to speak out on it like they have so many other things. I warned one meeting, the consensus last Saturday before last, was that it should go to a vote of the people. So I don't know why you folks fear that. And, oh, and I'm sorry, I don't mean to use the word fear. The word fear was thrown out while ago a couple of times. You know, that is the wrong way to characterize the intentions of our fellow citizens. I don't like liver and- I don't like liver and onions, but I don't fear liver and onions. These people can have concerns about STRs and not fear them. So I wish we would not characterize things in such terms.
So are you withdrawing your motion?
No, I'm not.
Okay, all right. So let's continue. Counselor Olver to the motion.
Sure thing. I'm gonna fall on the side of representative government. Primarily in this case, it's because it has been worked on for so long and, I mean, some of the newer councils, I'd be one of those, was taken to task tonight about how could you be making decisions here? Well, I know that I spent an awful lot of time on this and I know that all the other ones, I'm assuming all the other ones did too. And we are the people who have spent an incredible amount of time looking at both sides. And I think we are the ones who can make the best decisions and I think whatever votes are coming up are going to be split. But I think we are the ones that should make this decision. Some other things maybe should go to the vote, a vote, but I would go forward with this one. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Strom, or sorry, Mayor Protem Strom and Counselor Jansen.
I wanted to echo the sentiment that some of my co-councilors have made, that community feedback has indeed been an integral part of this process for several years, way before my tenure here. But I can speak for myself that, you know, over numerous ward meetings and other community meetings that I've been to, as we've either sat as the Housing Policy Committee and/or once it was coming to council, it was always bringing up that we are having this conversation and I'd like to get feedback. So I do want to make sure that the community understands because there've been a number of concerning emails that have come in today or public comment over Lakewood Speaks recently that have indicated that that is not the case. But it has been the case, at least on my watch. So I want to make sure that the community knows that some of us have definitely been trying to reach out and learn more. STRs are happening in Lakewood, whether we like it or not. The question really here tonight, the way I see it, is giving us the tools to be able to regulate these so that we can try to avoid some of these things that are problematic to some of our neighborhoods. It's a health, safety thing. It's a property rights thing. This is incredibly complicated and I don't think any of us up here are really super excited about making this decision, but we do owe it to our community to make a decision. And so yes, representative government is absolutely, this is a job. I was elected to do this job. I take this very seriously, hours upon hours upon hours. My stack of papers tonight is not as deep as Counselor Franks', but it is not anything less than a testament for the amount of time that I personally have put into learning this issue. So I just want to make sure that we do, I would like our residents to know that we hear you, we understand your concerns, and it is something that we have really tried to craft, something that we are taking into consideration, concerns from all sides of this. And I very much appreciate the, the mention that we even have a one-year look back. Let's see what's not working and let's revisit it and let's come back to it and make decisions because we can change things. The beauty of government is that it changes. We can change it. So that is the way I will be voting tonight. And I would like to add that, you know, I live in a pretty quiet neighborhood, but I do have neighbors in my neighborhood that do operate short-term rentals, single home or single rooms out of their homes in order to be able to afford their mortgage. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Counselor Jansen?
Thank you. So yes, I am the same. I, I've reached out to people. A couple people would call me and let me know how they felt, but in the last three or four days, this is, this was the stack that I got that were against STRs. And then in the last three days, hold on. These are the, these are the four that I got that were for STRs. But again, we were talking before all this and we did have most of the people that came in were expressing how the STRs are working. This is a really hard, hard thing because I, I, I would like to bring it to the vote to the people. I think that's what the people want. And this is what I've been hearing. And so as being a representative, I, I hear them and I want to represent them. So that's kind of where I'm coming from and I will be supporting this measure.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second that would send this to the ballot. No other questions or comments. Please cast your votes. Oh, there we go. Somebody do a no for Counselor Olver? Okay. So that motion fails eight-three. The nays being Paul Olver, Maia Guerrero, Stewart, Franks, Strom, Sharazai, and Vincent. Okay, Counselor Franks, you had another amendment?
So first I wanted to ask, I know we have a request to change the date. I don't believe that's recorded. Should I, should that be the first one where we're changing the date to September 1?
Yeah, that'd be under 5.55.
Yeah, I can read it. I've got a motion ready to go if that's okay. I have other ones, but, so let me do that one first. I move to change the effective date from June 1, 2023 in section 5.55.005 and 5.55130 and anywhere else the effective date is referenced to September 1, 2023.
Second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Counselor Abel?
I withdraw my comment.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second on the date change. Any other comments?
Oh, I'm sorry. There is one thing I'd like to bring up.
Okay.
And that is a one-year look back or any look back. We have done this many times and how many times?
Hold on, hold on, hold on. We're, to the motion, there's probably, there's probably gonna be an amendment about a look back.
Okay.
Yep.
When you get there, let me know.
Okay. This is a motion in a second. Switch the dates. Please cast your votes. Someone vote for Counselor Olver, please. Aye. Counselor Springsteen? And nay? Okay, that passes nine, aye, two, nay, the nay being Abel and Springsteen. Counselor Abel, do you have a motion?
Yes. A one-year look back. We plan to one-year look back many a time. Sometimes we don't look back. Sometimes it just gets shuffled aside and then sometimes we look back and there's no real information out there to provide us with a picture of whether we have succeeded or failed in our intention. So just to let you folks know, a one-year look back is often useless. Thank you.
Counselor Franks?
So the next one has a question and it may negate even the need to do anything, but really what I'm talking about is the, the definition we have under the ownership. And my question is, would the verbiage regarding sort of the titling or the, or the ownership of the property, would that be impacted for, let's say, an elderly couple who holds their home in trust? So it's listed at the, the assessor's office that it might be Bill and Mary Smith Living Trust. Does that then still, they still fall under being permitted, correct?
If we go back to the primary residence definition, which we would with the first motion that passed, yes, they would still be able to live there. It would be their primary residence, even though it was owned by a trust.
Exactly. I just wanted to clarify for that. We had a lot of outreach from, from seniors who have their place that way. I thought it would, but I just told them I would for sure ask that there. So that takes care of that piece. I do have, let me move over to the next one. All right, so for counselors to get oriented, I'll be at 5.55.1110, just in case you want to orient yourself to that. I move to amend section 5.55.110B to include a requirement to main, maintain and be able to produce records. And the, the section would read in total, mailing requirements. Such notices shall be mailed via certified mail to each such property owner within 10 days following the date of submission of the license application. Here's the new part. Maintain proof of delivery and be able to provide to the authority upon request. So it, it's some, some additional verbiage. It doesn't really change anything. We're already requiring folks to send those certified letters. This is just letting them know they need to maintain those records and if the authority, and in this case, the authority would be the city clerk's office, if they were to request those, they would just need to produce those. So it's, I don't think it's controversial. I think it's fairly minor, but we'll let my, my co-councils decide that. Second.
Okay, there's a motion in a second. Any discussion or questions for clarification? Counselor Maia Guerrero?
Forgive my ignorance, can you get, can you get a confirmation of delivery from the regular USPS without like insuring your package? Okay, thank you.
Okay, there's a motion in a second. Please cast your votes. Counselor Olver is a nay. Okay, and that passes seven, aye, four, nay, the nay being Paul Olver, Maia Guerrero, and Abel.
Do you want me to continue? Okay, sorry. This one here could potentially be a little controversial from the dais since we already talked about it last time and we made a change to there. This is regarding insurance, so I, I'll kind of read the part that I'm asking to change based on some research around what other communities are doing and some additional discussions. So my motion is, I move to revise 5.55.030B3 to read proof of insurance that covers the proposed license premises for use as an STR which adequately covers the short-term rental liability and in no event is less than $500,000. I want to explain sort of why that. I felt we were left sort of exposed with saying just which adequately covers, which is very subjective, what is adequately covers. I felt that put that in the hands of the city clerk to have to make that determination and not being, you know, that not being, so I just felt like putting a minimum was a fair thing. And then this still allows our city clerk to promulgate rules if that is determined to be insufficient. So I just wanted to kind of explain the why. Second.
Okay, this is our motion in a second. And just to clarify, Counselor Franks, this is something that's been used in other communities?
It has, and I have my matrix here if you all would like to have some, some background on that, but yes, it has been used in other communities.
Great, thank you. Just a motion in a second. Any questions? All right, seeing none, please cast your votes. Counselor Springsteen, okay. Passes aye, three, nay, the nay being Olver, Maia Guerrero, and Stewart.
And I think this is my last one, although because I had typed up my notes before the bigger change, I need to go back through that, but I'll do the last one. It is not actually an amendment. It is more, I guess what I'd be seeking, and I defer to the mayor, possibly just council consensus on this. So let me explain what it is and then we can see how we might want to go forward. What I'm trying to accomplish is that I want to mitigate risk for folks who apply for an STR license and that to ensure homeowners don't violate the FHA rules that prohibit STR use in an FHA, if they have an FHA mortgage. That comes with a very stiff penalty of perjury and a homeowner, there's a lot of paperwork when you're doing a loan. You may not recognize that you, you signed off on something and at least, and I would need the city attorney's office to see when that rule came into effect because maybe it's so new that if you have an older mortgage. But this request would be for the application process and for our city clerk, just to make sure that if there is FHA rules in there, we alert people to that as they're doing the application to simply say, if you have an FHA loan, you need to check your loan paperwork or check with your loan servicer because that does come with a five-year penalty of perjury if you, you do. So I just wanted to call attention to that. And I know that our city attorney's office looked into that, so if you all have questions on that, we've looked at the ruling, looked at the application, and we just really want to protect our homeowners. I do want to say that 73% of the loans in 2021 were conventional, 13% FHA, 9% VA, which has a much more liberal rule, and 1% USDA. So it is not a vast majority by any means, but we certainly wouldn't want to put anybody into legal peril.
So essentially, just, I guess, when we look at promulgating rules, if there's consensus, if that makes sense to have that in the application, would it be? And I'm getting head shakes, yes. So, okay. Okay. All right. Any other amendments? Counselor Sharazai? And then Counselor Olver?
Yes, thank you. I do want to just revisit the, the conversation on short, on short-term rentals. I would like to put this conversation to bed, to be honest. I would like to be explicit in the look back to set to March 2024, so not one year from September, but one year from this date, to give us six months to really review, to sort of make sure that community concerns are being addressed in a timely manner and any other conversations that we're going to be continuing on this topic.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we include a one-year look back dated for March 2024.
Second.
Okay, motion in a second. Any discussion? Counselor Olver, I imagine your hand is up for another one, but, okay.
No, I was gonna respond to Counselor Franks.
Oh.
Was that a motion?
No, that was just a consensus to examine it when they're doing the rulemaking.
Okay, okay, so I have a comment about a look back then. Did we have a, did we get a second on that?
Yes.
Okay. So, yeah, I have only been around, what, a year and three, four months now? I have not seen a look back. And I noticed somebody else said that like we kind of don't do them. And so how do they work? Because we talk about look backs in council all the time, but we never seem to do one. And so I'd love to hear, you know, what the, from some of the people that have been around for a long time, how are we gonna get it to actually happen?
Yeah, certainly. So I think our most recent one was the.
Motel hotel.
The motel hotel, hotel motel. And then we did one on safe parking as well.
Yes.
Right. I saw the one on safe parking, that seemed to be just a report.
Okay.
Because it wasn't meant to be a look back because we didn't go back in. And, you know, what we're talking about here is making changes if we need to. And so there's a difference in my view between a look back where we actually go, hey, maybe we should make some changes, and a report where they just tell us what went on. And I do remember the safe parking report. So is there some way that we can actually stamp it in that so-and-so actually, fortunately, a year from now, we're gonna have a completely different council? But is there some way to, if we approve a look back, that it actually happens?
I can answer that. Yes, we can flag it for an agenda for 2024 in March. So as we have this long-running council agenda, we can just flag it for that month.
Counselor Abel and Counselor Franks?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to remind folks of our 5G look back, that we didn't get a look back until it was finally brought to the forefront by a council motion. And then we got nothing that was really, this is what we were concerned about and this is the result. No cause and effect. I would suggest. And then we got nothing that was really, this is what we were concerned about, and this is the result. No cause and effect. I would suggest that if we do, if we include a lookback, we put some teeth into it and set some parameters for what we would like to learn from that lookback.
Counselor Franks.
First, to respond to Counselor Abel, yes, definitely would want the data points, would want that. But I would like to see if our motion maker would be amenable to a friendly amendment of June. When I... You want it to have enough meaningful data. I get that you don't want to go from a date. But the goal would be to have enough meaningful data to demonstrate to this council, but also demonstrate to the community. That way, the conversation... So with that extra, what, three months? I do think that there's some serious data points in there that I just know from having wanted to do them sooner in the past and then ended up with not enough data points to have a meaningful conversation. I've made that sort of in the past, and I just would wonder if you... If you're not, that's certainly fine, but I just wanted to see if you'd be open to that.
I would be open to that.
Does that require a second? Anybody?
Since the amending motion has already been seconded, whoever amended it would have to also agree to allow the friendly amendment. And I don't, there were two voices, so I wasn't sure who it was.
Yeah, sure, yes.
Okay.
Motion, a second, on the date of that lookback. And then, you know, we could be here all night trying to figure out what criteria. So I think certainly the main points on a consensus piece would be how many there are, what issues we've had, revocations. I mean, certainly all things related to that, as well as, I don't know... I know Denver went back in and looked at if it's affected their affordable housing supply, but I don't know, you know, how deep you can go into that in one year, so... Okay, motion, a second. Please cast your votes. On the date, period.
The June 2023 date.
Yes. Yeah, June 2023. 24, sorry, 2024. 24. Counselor Springsteen's an aye. Okay, that passes 11 ayes, zero nays. Okay, are there other amendments? Okay, Mayor Protam, could I have a motion to approve as amended, please?
Yes.
I move for the...
One second, I'm sorry.
Mayor, we have a main motion on the table to adopt the ordinance as presented. So what you are doing is amending the main motion that's already on the table. So it's just to amend the main motion to accept the ordinance as amended.
I move to amend the main motion to accept ordinance 02023-5 as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion, a second. Discussion, Counselor Olver.
Okay, addressing the mouse in the room, a few people have suggested that I recuse myself over this vote. And the short answer is, like, no. The long answer is, why? It's, my Mara came up and showed an email that I had sent to her, and the paragraph she seemed to have trouble with started out with, "Maybe someday I will want to rent out my place." And, well, quite simply, a "maybe someday" applies to every councillor up there on the dais. And if we use such a low bar to recuse ourselves, I think we pretty much are going to have to recuse ourselves all the time. All the things that come before council, affordable housing, the people that own a house technically would want to see their house increase in value. The people that are renting, like, an apartment, technically would want to see the housing prices come down. So, like, everybody has a dog in the fight. And so, like, I won't be recusing myself because something where "maybe someday I might do something." And I'd also point out, by the way, that the house we're talking about is my primary residence. Therefore, it doesn't count. It would, it's not part of this whole discussion as such. There's a couple other things. There is, that came about because I talk in scenarios. One scenario being, hey, maybe down the road, maybe one day I will want to have an STR, and I think about that. Another much more important scenario to me is the neighbor across the street at a corner from me. When I moved in, there was an elderly couple there, and now one of them has passed on, and the other has been moved by her children into assisted living. She is renting out her house to pay for that assisted living. And so that's a scenario where I'm going, I will not vote to not let them collect the money that they're going to need for medical care. And we've talked about this before in other cases, where somebody is going to get older, or all of us are going to get older, and we might need some extra income, you know, maybe rent out our place once in a great while, maybe do it as an STR, maybe do it as a long-term. But I think we're being very, well, too restrictive on this thing, making it a, having to be a primary residence. The house across the street is not a primary residence of the renters. It's now the primary residence of the children. I'm sorry, the children are now the owners. So under this ordinance, as it sits right now, they would not be able to rent that out as an STR. And therefore, they wouldn't be able to pay for the health care of their parent. And I have a real problem with that. And so I'm going to be voting no on this, because I think we need to allow that kind of thing. And I think we need to allow our senior citizens to be able to pay for their health care. And that's one way of doing it. And in fact, this STR, it's a new thing, because Airbnb came along and VRBO came along. And in full disclosure, I used to own a condo in Frisco, and I did rent it out occasionally. But I just found that to be too much trouble than anything else, even though everybody who rented from me was really fantastic. I had absolutely no problems with them whatsoever. So I've never had a problem with small businesses. I will champion small businesses. For instance, if somebody in Lakewood, a resident living here in a house, like a duplex, and they wanted to rent out the other half of the duplex as an STR, that's not going to be legal under the ordinance we're now talking about. And so I can't vote for this. Because that scenario has been the way people build wealth for retirement for decades and decades. You know, some people like to invest in the stock market, but real estate has always been a much better place to invest into. And, you know, I will never be one to want the venture capitalists to come in or the institutional investors. I don't want them. I don't want big corporations. But the way I've done things in the past is I have, I actually have two corporations right now. But they're me. They're sole proprietors, or it could be an S corp. And so I'm not afraid of corporations. I am afraid of, like, Amazon STRs coming in. But my neighbor buying another house, I'm not, and renting it out, I'm not afraid of that at all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Other comments? Okay.
Well, I would just say, you know, certainly thank you to everyone who worked really hard on this for a long time. I think, as you saw tonight, people on both sides of this felt like they were representing their constituencies. And it is very common for us, and that's our system, to make amendments on second reading. And so there was a lot of comment, and some felt like they were, things were being done under the table. At one point, we actually had people present their amendments early, and they were chastised for that. So there's never a great way, but I do want to just give my, a shout out to the folks that helped make this come to where we are tonight, because there was a lot. But I just want the community to know that, no matter where you are, if you made the motions a couple weeks ago, you certainly were doing this because you were representing what you felt was your community as well. Same with what was brought back tonight. And this is just a tough issue. So thank you to everybody who participated. With that, please cast your votes.
Counselor Olver is a nay. Okay, that passes seven ayes, four nay, the nay being Olver, Jansen, Springsteen, and Abel. Okay, so let's roll into general business. First up is Counselor Olver.
Well, that was so exciting, I forgot what my general business was.
So this was the project for LAC Neighborhood Subcommittee for the Interactive Map?
Right, yes. Okay, wow, what a change of gears this has been to be. Quite a lot, six months ago or something like that, maybe longer, I noticed that Lakewood had an interactive map where people could draw where they thought we needed more sidewalks. And I said, "Wow, what a great idea for bicycle routes and trails." And so I asked about, "Hey, can we have another one of those for bicycle routes and trails?" And the answer was, "No, you can use the same one." And so then I looked further, and there was, like, one or two bicycles routes that somebody had put on there, and 400 sidewalks. So, and now the sidewalk, interactive sidewalk map has been turned off. And so I would like to have a separate bicycle trail, bicycle route map that people can do the exact same thing that we're talking about as the sidewalk map, where our citizens can interact and say, "Here, this is where we need something. This is where it's dangerous. This is where we can wait a few years, but it should be, it should come along." So I suggest moving that to the LAC Neighborhood Committee, because they've already got experience doing exactly this kind of map.
Great. Okay, well, thank you for that. And I think there might be a couple clarifications either count. They hit the buttons at the same time. So I have Counselor Mayaguerro or Counselor Stewart?
I think this is a great idea. However, based on the presentation from the LAC earlier this very evening, it sounds like this is actually a project that's already been done. So I would be supportive of their suggestion of putting the GIS map up on our website so that residents can use that. But from my understanding, this was the presentation that we got a little bit earlier, perhaps before you joined the meeting, Counselor Olver.
So Counselor Mayaguerro, for you, we're going to say the same thing.
Yeah, I just had a question of clarification, because I wanted to ensure that essentially the map that... I know that the map that is being suggested by the LAC be added is the GIS of what is missing versus, like, essentially people putting in what they think needs to be done. But I also knew that that beautiful, big spreadsheet that they gave to us has, like, rankings and considerations. And so I imagine that that, and they did a ton of community input and listening. And so I imagine that that is sufficient for others on the council in terms of us then, and staff, for us to then be able to think about how to prioritize. I think that was the goal, but I just, I wanted to ensure that others agree with that take of that presentation that we got today.
Counselor Franks, and then we'll go back to Counselor Olver.
Well, and I just wanted to make sure my understanding was correct. The suggestion was also that we keep up that forum where folks can report. So it felt, it felt like we had kind of tied off on all those loose ends. Keep that input piece open, put the map out there. And then there was this amazing matrix that we had. So I feel all bases have been covered. I don't see anything that's left undone.
Okay, back to you, Counselor Olver.
Yes, you're right, I missed it earlier. Did they present the sidewalk map, the one that I've seen many times? It didn't, it wasn't complete. It didn't contain bicyc, I mean, okay, there was a couple of people who put bicycling on there, but it was completely overwhelmed by all the sidewalk things. And that's why I was asking for a separate bicycling thing. Did they have a separate layer? I never saw a separate layer when I looked at it for bicycles. And it was all hodgepodge, it was all thrown in together. But then I did miss it. So is that what you're talking about?
So Counselor Olver, what I would suggest is maybe if you were to just kind of go catch up on that, and there's all kinds of information, and then bring this forward to the very next meeting. If you see some gaps in there that didn't get addressed... So I think it would just, it would be good to kind of listen to that presentation. There was lots of good material, and there was action I must put forward. And if you still see gaps in there, I'd be certainly interested in hearing what those are. Just, but now it would just be sort of, we're trying to educate. And I can speak for myself, I'm tired, and I don't think my brain is going to be able to properly do that. So if you would be amenable, then you could bring this back later after you've cottoned yourself up.
Counselor Mayaguerro, and then Counselor Olver, last word.
Yes, I agree with Counselor Franks that if you end up seeing gaps. But I will say that this does have at least sidewalks, shared use paths, and trails. And then there's, like, essentially then assessment for a sort of connectivity and what it's connected to. And in addition to the presentation this evening in your packet, which I really loved getting to go over, they have, like, a whole table with all their different categorizations, and then a 35-page report that really digs into the different types of, like, pedestrian, bicycle, shared path, et cetera, that they, like, looked at and prioritized and why. So agree that if there ends up being a really distinct gap, happy to have the LAC continue to fill it in.
Okay. Does that sound good, Counselor Olver?
I would say that I'm pretty sure there's some huge gaps in there. That is actually a sidewalk map and a couple of bicycle routes. And so I would love to separate them out into two different things. But I'll, I'll take a look and make sure. But I'm pretty sure we're going to be talking about it again.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next one, Counselor Sherezai.
Yes, thank you. So it's my understanding that in former versions of Policies and Procedures Manual for City Council, there was an option to utilize censure. And I'd like to discuss, including an amendment to the City Council Policies and Procedures Manual under Section 6 Code of Conduct, to add this tool back in. I'm not asking for us to censure anyone today, but I'm asking for us to provide an opportunity for taking collective action. We can benchmark what that determination is, but I'd like for us to be able to signal to our community our disapproval of actions while keeping the work going. So I would hate for us to disrupt our momentum working here on the dais by addressing some of the unraveling of dialogue that we can see up here. But this would be an option to add this tool back in, to ensure disapproval by the body of, is out there for the public to understand.
Counselor Mayaguerro.
I would like to just express my support for this. I think that having all of the tools that we can use to ensure that we are able to conduct our business without censoring people, but with also making sure that we are really having the gravity and respect for the seats, for the office, and for the community. And the majority of bodies like ours have a tool like censure, and we've only very recently not had it. And I think, of course, making sure that we put that in place in a way where the bar for that is adequately high, of course. But I do, I do feel supportive of the idea of making sure that we have all the tools that we can at a time when we know that local politics are more heated every day. And so wanting to make sure that we really do have those tools to ensure the decorum of the space.
Great. So Counselor Abel, Franks, Vincent, Olver.
Boy, if you're concerned about heated, take a look at Congress. This was removed seven years ago for a number of reasons. And some of my colleagues here voted to remove it. Sharon Vincent... And some of my colleagues here voted to remove it, Sharon Vincent, Adam Paul, Bart Franks, myself. In reality, it had been used as a club, just to say, ah, shame on you. So, we felt it important to drop it. Also, it creates an expectation. There was a comment today on looking at Lakewood, I'm sorry, Lakewood Speaks, I believe, that said, yeah, let's make it financially harmful. Let's, let's put some real teeth in it. I don't believe we can do that. I believe all we can do is say, you're censured. And in the past, the censure was, it took a majority to bring someone up, but a supermajority to censure. We can't keep people from voting. We can't kick people out of office. We can hardly even say shame, shame, shame. So, why in the world are we going to do something that is more or less futile and will be used in, I'm sure, a partisan, I don't want to say partisan, but in a ally versus ally kind of situation? It adds further to the divisiveness of an already badly divided council.
Councillor Franks.
Boy, this is a hard one. What I would say is, the vast majority of the community that reaches out to me needs us to be better. They, they want us to get work done. They want us to have very rigorous debates. But the, the stuff that has gone on, I really struggle with this, because as councillor Abel mentioned, certainly I was part of the group that we went through that, Policies and Procedures, and pulled that out. I guess the first question I would have is, one, is there a record of anyone being censured? I mean, I, because I really want to, I wanted to, is there anyone through, basically in the recent past that we could recall of a censure happening to a council member? I guess that's my first question.
In the city of Lakewood, in my experience, there hasn't been anyone. And that would be, gosh, in this job, at least 13 and a half years.
Okay.
Well, one second, please. We can come back to that.
So, I want to make sure, and I think councillor Mayak Guerrero kind of spoke to this. The bar would have to be really high for me. We'd have to kind of work through that to make sure that I felt really comfortable about that. My goal is trying to figure out whatever tools I can bring to bear that will allow this body to have vigorous debate, people be able to work efficiently, and where we have people wanting to sign up to run for our open seats. I can't tell you how difficult it has been for folks who watch us interact, and I'm part of this. I'm not separating myself from this at all. But it is important to me that we find a way forward to be able to continue to have these discussions. Our communities are under a lot of pressure from a lot of different avenues, and these discussions are only going to get more difficult. I'll be gone in a few months, but I would desperately love to be part of some way of finding a solution that will make this body more effective, and the community feel like they can come and participate in a way that is healthy, and all of that. So, I would be very much open to, are you proposing that we have a session to sort of, kind of draft something or just bring back what was taken out? I didn't quite catch that, so I wanted to get clarity.
May I respond? I had trouble finding it, so I would have loved to have referenced that this evening for you. So, if there, you know, I want to be clear that I feel strongly that we should set the benchmark very high to be able to pull this lever. I don't want this to be a tool that we misuse. But I would love to better understand what was formally there. You know, I understand that, you know, it sounds like a majority to poll a consideration, and then a supermajority. I'd be open to that, but I would like to better understand what was previously there. And I would just add that, you know, there's six new councillors, and we should be able to weigh in on how we want to approach the Code of Conduct. We've inherited something that was decision seven years ago. The tone has changed up here, and so I would just ask for this to be a consideration. And I'm very happy to continue to discuss what is it that would be the appropriate benchmark that would get people comfortable.
Just to clarify, just the reason I don't think Ms. Hodson's prepared to answer about Mr. Brewer, because she is going back 13 years, and that was over 16, 17, 18 years ago. Councillor Vincent?
I'm of the same mindset. I remember some of the discussion on why we pulled it. But I would be very open to looking at something, and if we can take the one that we had as a basis and work from that. I think if I remember pulling from there, that there was some discussion about, why do we even have it? There's nothing much there, so maybe we can raise that bar higher. But I would, I would definitely be in favor of looking at it.
So, councillor Olver?
Yes, I don't, I don't mind that too much. It would have to be a supermajority, because I do believe it would immediately go into partisanship. And, you know, you might have, since councillor change, council changes every two years, you could literally have one group at each, at somebody's throat, and then the council chamber changes, and the new group coming in is on the opposite side, and they go after the other people. And I don't want to insult Aurora here, but that, that's kind of, we don't want to become Aurora. They were really at each other's throat on replacing that one person, and they had a five to five. Anyway, that's a different subject, really, but, yeah, if it was, the bar was set high enough, and there was definitely a supermajority to, yeah, I don't think it's that bad of an idea.
Councillor Springsteen?
Well, I think the sad part is that we're wasting time even talking about this, because, you know, yet again, this is like a petty distraction from what real good in the community is that we can be doing. So, for instance, we have a mother, or a daughter who lost her mother, who came begging us for help the last two meetings. And instead of talking about how do we help her, here we are talking about how do we silence other members who we don't like? I mean, you know, the list of a tool to support responding to council members that make belligerent, personal, impertinent, slanderous, threatening, abusive, or disparaging comments. I mean, who gets to decide that? I mean, aren't, isn't this politics? Aren't we grown up? I mean, you all went through campaigns where you were pretty, pretty bad to your opponents. And so, so now, now we want to censor others just because we're in the majority? I mean, because that's what it'll amount to, is if you're in the majority, you're going to censor others? You're going to take away their first amendment rights? You're not going to allow them to speak up for their constituents? You know, I mean, so, and another thing, I've been trying to get information about what happened to the canine dog that bit out Spencer Erickson's jugular bing.
So councillor, let's stick to what we're talking about, which is the censure, please.
I am, for the last two weeks, and I can't get that information yet. And so, you know, I mean, why aren't we talking about stuff like that? Like, why the city is subject, subjecting itself to liability by having these canine dogs that almost kill people? No, we want to talk about how to shut, how to shut me up from asking that question. And so, you know, for instance, on July 26, 2021, I have it written down, the mayor called me Looney Tunes from the dais. Should he be censured for that? Should he be censured for the week before calling me a lunatic? What about you councillor Shirazai? You go up to councillor Jansen and accuse her of a death threat to you and your children?
Okay, we're not going to, just, you waiting if you want to have a discussion about censure or not? That's what we're, we're not going to start attacking. It's a late night.
So, should you be censured for interrupting me constantly at every meeting?
Potentially, potentially.
And what about mayor, when you went and chest bumped councillor Abel on the dais? Should you be censured for that?
So, we're going to continue the conversation.
Or physically assaulting another councillor on the dais, which you did to him?
Oh, my goodness.
I mean, so that's my point.
The point is that you are making things up, and you are flat out lying right now, all right?
Oh, really? Well, it's pretty easily verified.
So, we're going to go ahead. It's not verifiable.
Go back and look at the videos.
All right. Councillor Shirazai, please finish this out, please. So, can we, if there's consensus to move forward, we can build off of that. And can we please move on to the next one? Is that okay? There's another request for council action. Well, the point is, we are going to take that under consideration and try to build off of it.
Mayor Paul, we have a copy of that as well, and can forward it to everyone.
Okay, thank you.
So, that gives everyone a chance to read what councillor Abel is referring to, and then you can have a conversation. You need to decide how you want to have this conversation. Is it in a study session? Should we book a study session?
Or a workshop, I think we did a workshop for the other policies.
The mayor should be censured for muting us. I think the mayor should.
Councillor, you are out of order again.
I'm not out of order. I wasn't done speaking. You stopped me from speaking. So, are you going to mute me again? Because that.
Yes, because you're out of order. You're out of order.
Let me go on with my list.
You can come back to when we're under council comments. We're not going to do this.
That I blame the mayor for.
Okay. So councillor Stewart, will you please go to our next one?
Sure, hopefully this will be quick. I wanted to bring something up to just send to Planning Commission for them to explore, to have on their agenda. That's all that this is, is getting a consensus from council to put an agenda item on the Planning Commission's meeting agenda, since they are the experts in zoning and all things zoning. So, I read an article about some potentially affordable home ownership, single-family, low-density options that are happening in, in parts of Denver. The concern in Lakewood with the potential of this is that we have in our zoning code minimum lot sizes that would still most likely make even a very affordably built and small, single-family home potentially not affordable simply because of the size of the land. So, I would just love for the Planning Commission to explore the idea of putting some contingencies, since I know that council in general is really committed to affordable home ownership options specifically, and looking at the potential for even some low-density homeownership options, which I know some folks are looking for as well. I just think that it would be interesting to get the Planning Commission's feedback and ideas around potentially tying some, oh my gosh, it's so late. You know, if you, if you have.
I wrote it down in here.
Thank you, yeah. Lower AMI, you know, homeownership options that potentially we could offer lower minimum lot sizes or duplex by right. I would just like to explore the idea. I'm not suggesting anything specific, because I know the Planning Commission is really the experts on this. So, really, I would just like them to explore the options and come back to us with some ideas. That's it.
Sounds good to me. Councillor Jansen, then councillor Abel.
I just want to say I support this. Thank you.
Councillor Abel.
Thank you. On these low-density, smaller lots, would you be willing to consider something like a tiny home?
I would be willing to consider anything. What I really would like is for the Planning Commission to come up with some feasible, you know, do these things pencil out? What are their best recommendations, being the experts on our zoning code in the city? And I would like the Planning Commission to discuss and come back to us with like, a menu of options, potentially.
They have done that before, and looking at a zone R10, and it went nowhere. So, not to say it wouldn't now, but my other concern is that you mentioned use by right. Does that mean that you could do this on any single-family residential lot in town?
No, 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 no.
Okay, I just don't want to.
No, any sort of, no, 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 no. Looking at tying those contingencies to affordability.
Thank you.
So, it sounds like we have consensus on that? Sounds fantastic.
Look at it.
Okay, all right. Ms. Hodson, we will disperse with the executive report, unless you really, yeah, okay. And we'll go to council. I'm just going to start on my left, councillor Abel. Councillor Vincent?
We will have a Word 2 meeting on Wednesday from 6:00 to 7:30 at the Clement Center. Thank you.
Councillor Shirazai?
No report.
Councillor Jansen?
No report.
Mayor Protem Strom?
No report.
Councillor Franks? Councillor Stewart?
We'll have a Word 3 meeting in April. More to come.
Okay, councillor Mayak Guerrero?
No report.
Okay, councillor Olver?
I've got about half hour. No, I'm just kidding. I've got nothing.
Councillor Springsteen?
Just wanted to thank staff for finally coming through on giving Latonya Davis the police records on Patricia Dilworth, and thank councillor Olver and councillor Jansen for supporting me on that and doing some things to push that forward. And then, you know, my concern is still that there are a lot of concerns within those records. And so, I would like to see the city give this lady help with what she is going through. Thanks.
Okay, so I'd like to again thank everybody. Speaking of use by right, be on the lookout. I think the governor's going to be releasing a package of housing bills that deal with affordable housing. And it will be interesting to see how that plays into things that the city of Lakewood has done and other things. And we'll certainly be engaged, and hopefully it will be an opportunity to increase affordable housing. We will be here next week, yeah, for a study session, and then we'll be done. So, thanks for everybody. We'll adjourn at 11:38 PM.